I think it's perfect.
I think it is too. It's pretty sweet.
My ladyship, ladyship.
Welcome, Councilor McMath. We're just beginning. So, we do have an agenda in front of us, council, so looking for a motion to approve is presented. Moved by Councilor St. Pierre. We are in committee of the whole, so we don't need a second or for motions. So I'll just call the question. All those in favor? Oppose? It's carried unanimously. And the way that public input works is that it's basically built into every item. So unlike regular meetings, whereas at the beginning, we'll have our presentations and we'll just work it in through each item as they come up, and we just have the four items. So, on that note, we'll begin with our transportation master plan and a status update. And we have a presenter tonight, Mr. Dan Casey? Casey, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. And if you could just turn on the microphone so we can all hear you, that'd be fantastic. Excellent. Welcome and thank you.
Great. Thank you for having me. So my name is Dan Casey. I'm transportation planner with Urban Systems here in Victoria. And we're the consultants on the SUCC transportation master plan. So I've got about a 10-minute presentation on our progress to date, I guess, and then I'll wrap up with a bit of overview of what we're about to do next. Okay. So what's been done so far? This is a bit of, I will say, an overview for what I'm about to speak to for the next 10 or so minutes as well. So we started out, background review, moved to community engagement, which happened early 2019. We've worked with SUCC staff on report content and structure and sort of look and feel based on some other documents that we and others have produced. We've done some growth forecasts, which will be the basis for some road network traffic analysis work we'll be doing. And we've done a fair bit of data collection as well, which is focused on, and I'm not gonna, I'm gonna speak to all those other items in a second. I'm not gonna bore you with the details of the data collection. But we have been out there, it was about six months ago now, doing traffic counts. So we had, I think, 10 hose count locations. So those are the pneumatic hose counters you see on the road sometimes when you drive over them. They make a bit of a bump-bump noise. That's us or others collecting information on how many cars travel past that point, and also how fast they're going, and sort of their class or their size. So we laid hoses out in 10 locations on sort of on more major roads in SUCC. And so we've got that data all entered and analyzed. We also had nine intersection locations that we counted. So these are more isolated to the busiest hours of the day. But they tell us not just how many cars, but which direction they're turning. And that is the basis of intersection analysis work that we'll be doing over the next few months. Okay, so our background review. Background review is really focused on understanding SUCC's pre-existing plans, so that we make sure the work we're doing is within sort of the context that's been set and is consistent with the directions of those plans. So we've looked at the 2009 transportation master plan. A sort of, I'll say, a starting point, but there's a lot in there, some of which has been done, some of which is worthwhile bringing forward and is under consideration as part of this work. We looked to the OCP and the Parks and Trails master plan, both of which we understand are sort of due to be renewed in the near future. But the information contained in there also helps inform our background understanding. And then, more recently, we've seen the, sort of, the working guiding principles of this, and vision of this council, which we want to make sure that the plan that we produce that's meant to last into the next 10 years and beyond is consistent with sort of the vision and the direction for this council. So a few of the items that we've seen in there that are, sort of, they're music to my ears, we'll say, is a focus on environmental leadership and sustainability. It's nice to hear that as sort of a starting point for this piece of work. Another one that really caught my eye was the concept of long-term thinking. So thinking 10 years, maybe 20 years and beyond, and creating a plan, an implementation plan, to help SUCC get there from a transportation perspective. So I'll speak more to timeline and horizon years in a minute here. So I mentioned off the top, we completed some community engagement. So this happened in late January, early February. We had two open houses, one on a Wednesday evening, that was at Edward Mill. We had another sort of follow-up open house the following Sunday. Attendance at each of those sessions was in and around 60 people. We received some great feedback. And one of the things we also did on the Wednesday evening session were breakout workshops, where we sort of drilled down more specifically on certain items related to transportation. And those were, those were very telling, and we got, we definitely got good dialogue and back and forth between various residents who attended those sessions. Also worth noting that those were joint open houses between this transportation master plan project and the Parks and Trails master plan project. So we had sort of some shared material between the two processes that was presented to the group. And then these breakout sessions that I, that I mentioned, they were actually, there were sort of two halves to that. So one was specific to transportation. We were able to drill down more specifically on mobility, transportation, active transportation. And then the second half was on parks and trails, which drilled down on some of the specific features of that. We also, for, over a period of about two months, we had an online survey that was administered. Response rate was up over, I think, about 350 responses. We asked questions around things like, what are the top issues? What do you see as the potential solutions? And we differentiated between different networks. So road networks, sidewalks, cycling networks, and some other things, bus stops, transit as well. And I think I've got a few slides here on some of the sort of key takeaways from the survey. So one of the things we did ask is, what are the, what are the top challenges, transportation challenges in SUCC? We heard, and this is a top three that's on the screen, by percentage, as in, of all the people that responded, the 350 or so respondents, what percentage of them indicated these are challenges that they face? So too much traffic during rush hour. Almost 50% of respondents indicated there's too much traffic during rush hour. Transit isn't frequent enough. So we've, we've actually participated since this time in some BC Transit workshops. I think breaking down that item a bit more. It's about, there's, there's transit service that's internal to SUCC, which we understand is quite limited, and there's a desire for more. There's also the service that runs between SUCC and the West Shore and Greater Victoria, which, there's actually quite a high ridership on it, as there is, and decent frequency, but still during peak periods, there's issues with capacity. And the third key challenge we, we heard was a lack of sidewalks. So that's, we also heard loud and clear that a possible solution that SUCC should explore is expanding the sidewalk network. So those two obviously go hand in hand. This is an example of, so we asked sort of text-based questions. We also asked geographically located questions, so respondents could actually indicate where, within SUCC, they're experiencing their, their issues, their challenges. So the service we use is a platform called Metriquest, and it allows outputs like what you see on the screen. So I won't dwell too much on the details of this, but we do have versions of this map, which is where people travel to and where people travel from in SUCC. And then the color of the dot indicates the travel mode they're using, driving, walking, cycling, et cetera. So we have a whole series of these maps that are in the community engagement summary report, that I think was in the council package. So there's all sorts of those you can look through. And it is quite neat to see geographically how individuals' travel patterns are distributed. And you start to see concentrations in the town center like you might expect. When you look at some of the origins information, you see it's a little more spread out, because there's not a lot of sort of residential density, real pockets of density in SUCC. So it's, it's quite dispersed that way. And I'll just go through a couple photos from the open house and the workshops. So this was the weekday evening open house. We had a series of display panels that we had maps of sort of existing facilities, existing conditions. We had some probing questions that we asked that people either sort of respond or interact with, with the project team, or to pin their stickies onto the boards and with some of their preferences or some of their issues. Let's go through a couple photos of that evening. This was one of the breakout workshops. So you can actually see, we got around the table and engaged people a little bit more interactive and a bit more of a discussive kind of manner, where you had multiple people drilling down on details. So this was from the Sunday afternoon session, so presented a lot of the same material, again. Example of people's feedback on the sticky notes. For whatever reason, people seem to love writing and pinning their sticky notes. So it's something we often do. Again, the, the Sunday afternoon. Okay. So the next thing we've, we've been working on, again closely with SUCC staff, are growth projections. So, I mean, normally, growth projections will be done as part of more of a land use planning process, we'll say. But they are very important for the transportation work we're doing, because when we project out transportation conditions, traffic conditions, but also alternative transportation conditions into the future, we want to base it on a realistic and sort of understood growth scenario. So I've been involved in these plans before, where not as much emphasis has been put on actual sort of nuanced and detailed growth projections, and there's just been a blanket 2% or 3% or some sort of background growth that's projected out in the future. It doesn't account for sort of specific neighborhoods or development happening in certain areas and not happening in other areas. And then when we, for the traffic work that we do, we, we project the number of new vehicles or new trips on the road as a result of future development. That can result in a bit of, sort of, an unrealistic future growth scenario. So what we've done here, we've used the CRD's regional transportation model as a baseline. Those figures are a few years out of date, so we've growth them up to reflect 2018. And we've analyzed out, the map on the right is showing what the CRD model refers to as TAZs or traffic analysis zones. And so those are the basis for the growth scenarios that we, that we developed. So we've done the growth scenarios on a five, 10, and 20-year timelines. So 2023, roughly, 2028, and 2038. Those align with some of the other regional initiatives that are ongoing. We project out land use. So when we're projecting transportation demand, we're concerned with land use more than we are with population. So in dealing with land use, we differentiate between single-family homes, multifamily homes, and then employment-based uses, which can take in things like commercial, industrial, institutional, things like that. And we project out on these five, 10, 20-year horizons, and we project out for each of those zones that are shown on the map. And again, ground truth that with SUCC staff based on either approved or planned development in those areas. And that's the baseline for us projecting future, future traffic growth. We ground truth that. We sort of almost reverse engineer it against what the projected population increases are and make sure that the land uses that we've estimated represent a real, sort of, realistic, I guess, population growth scenario. So we've landed on growth projections for each of these zones that we feel is realistic, and we're about to set out on actually undertaking the, the traffic modeling work that'll project out on five, 10, and 20-year timelines. Another thing we've done, and we actually have a working session with staff tomorrow, which we'll touch on this, I'm sure, in some detail. We've settled on a sort of a structure for the final plan itself, the document, how it's going to look and be organized. So with guidance from staff, we've, we've landed on sort of a three, a three-tiered plan. The first section or first tier will be focused on the process that was undertaken and developing the plan. So it'll encapsulate some of the engagement and with the community and stakeholders that was undertaken. Review and sort of relevancy to existing and parallel plans and processes. I'll also talk a lot about the community as it is right now in terms of pre-existing transportation infrastructure, how people travel, percentage of travel by various travel modes, things like that. Really paint the picture of what SUCC is today and how, what the process, the plan went through to get to ultimately the third, the third phase. The second phase will be really the details. We, that's, we'll call it a working title. We might come up with something a little, a little better. But it's gonna be broken out by each travel mode. We'll have the whole series of maps that talk about existing infrastructure, proposed new infrastructure, where connections are gonna be made, where overlap might exist between this plan and the Parks and Trails master plan, especially with respect to things like cycling networks, sidewalks, connections to bus stops, things like that. It'll also talk about work and plans of other jurisdictions, such as BC Transit or the Ministry of Transportation, and how the recommendations in the plan for SUCC might interact and be coordinated with those. One thing, the, the last item there in section two of the plan is related to new mobility and sustainable transportation, and that's quite an exciting one. And I do look forward to kind of working through with SUCC staff, with the community, and potentially back with this group, the shape that actually takes, because that really is kind of the, the new frontier as far as transportation is concerned. The third section is gonna be the plan itself, and that's really gonna be the implementation and sort of future monitoring of, of the plan and the progress made toward the, the proposed investments in infrastructure and programs and policies. And give you something for at least the next 10 years that you can use to help guide your decision-making and the investments you're making. Okay, so that's really a synopsis of what we've done to date. Our next steps, we're, like I said, we have a working session with staff tomorrow. I'm gonna go through this in a bit more detail. And then we're gonna set out to get to work over the course of the summer. So we're gonna start fleshing out this plan, really developing based on the existing network mapping, what the future networks might look like, and then help to sort of prioritize which investments might be made first, which are realistic in the short term, which might need to get sort of pushed down the line into the long term. I believe we're back in the fall with the public to sort of share preliminarily what, what the, what the transportation master plan is, get some feedback, sort of assess the level of support for some of the key recommendations and key proposed investments. And then we will revise the plan based on that, and we'll be back, I think it's in the, with the winter of 2020, looking for formal endorsement of the plan from, from this group. I also highlighted this, at the bottom of the screen there is this one-process, two-plans concept. It's, it's actually more than a concept. It really is what, how these two, the Parks and Trails master plan and the transportation master plan, how they're being undertaken. So that, and that, that excites me as a planner. It means we're doing the right thing. It makes sure that any investments in infrastructure that might sort of overlap between the two plans is done intelligently and, and efficiently. So that we can start to really get the greatest benefit from, from money and efforts being, being spent in SUCC. So, yeah, do, you know, have confidence knowing that those two plans are being done in cooperation. The lead of the Parks and Trails master plan works for the same firm that I do. We, we correspond weekly, if not more frequently, and we're working to make sure that what comes forward is, is coordinated and effective. So that's, I'll wrap up with that. I'm available for any, any questions or discussion.
Thank you. When you mentioned that you would be back in the winter, I thought I heard 2020. So like, next year?
That, to, to seek endorsement on the final plan.
Okay, so like a year and a half from now?
Well, okay, maybe January, February of 2020.
Okay.
Yes. Yes.
I was thinking-
I don't want a two-and-a-half-year project, no.
Okay, so, right, because December, okay.
Yeah. Good clarification.
Just wanting to, just crystallize that timeline there. And then will, will the plan also include the data that you've collected? Because I find that quite interesting in terms of which intersections, where were the hoses, and what were those counts?
Yeah, so I guess to be determined exactly how that looks in the end, you'll have that information.
Okay.
It's a matter of whether that's in the plan itself, whether it's an appendix to the plan, or whether it's some sort of companion technical document.
Sure.
But that information will, will be provided, yeah.
Okay.
Do you have a preference on which, how that lives on?
Just so it's there in, in, in a way that, that we can look at it in terms of, okay, what, you know, where was the data collected from, which intersections? And then with the hoses, the only thing is that it doesn't tell you where that car ended. So, for example, you could have someone that lives and works in SUCC that maybe has to drive their child to Cecino's that would drive over it, pick it up, and then come back. It doesn't, it's not necessarily saying, it's not marking the car. It's just a trip going over in a vehicle. So, you know, it doesn't mean that that person is commuting out and it's a different person in. It's just the same person back and forth.
It could be, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, it is, it is blind on who's driving over the hoses. It's telling us how many, it's telling us roughly how big the vehicle is, which may or may not be helpful.
That would be. You'd be curious, just to see what the, what the weight and what that looks like, for sure.
Yeah. It won't tell us where they're coming from or where they're going to.
No, I understand that. And then, but it also tells, you mentioned something about the speed, though?
It can, yeah.
Interesting.
Yeah. The, the data is fairly reliable. It's not always entirely reliable, but it's, the hoses are put out in the field at a predetermined sort of width. And from that, how quickly the, the wheels go da-da-da-da, it can, it can tell us roughly how fast they're going.
Okay. And then the other question I had is, with the development and that you've been working with our staff on, will that also just say, like, this is a single-family dwelling, but if there's a suite in it, then that's going to change the number of trips perhaps?
Good comment.
So is that going to be captured, the suites and even some of the illegal ones?
So it is definitely gonna not get down to the granular level of understanding which dwellings might have suites, which ones might not.
Right.
What it will do is that the, the traffic rate that we, so a particular zone is meant to, projected to have 100 new single-family dwellings. We will project a traffic growth projection onto those 100 dwellings that will attempt to account for a, a percentage of them having secondary suites. So we'll, we'll have to do some work to figure out what a, what a suitable sort of guesstimate is of how many might.
Yeah, no, that's fair.
Yeah.
And then will it also show us, like, here is a potential new road you could consider connecting through and what that would look like?
It will.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then in terms of survey response, where there's a lack of sidewalks, was there a difference in the, in the definition of sidewalk versus a multi-use trail? Like, is, because like on Church Road, we have a really good multi-use trail, but it's not a sidewalk. But is that, or even on Wadham's, it's a lit multi-use trail. It's not a sidewalk. So would someone still argue that there's no sidewalk? I can't walk down Wadham's way.
Yeah. It did ask just sidewalk. It sort of generically, so it didn't get into nuancing the facility type. There'll be a process of filtering where if we get a whole bunch of responses that say there's not a sidewalk on Wadham's where there ought to be, we can, we will sort of, that'll make it onto the map. And then there'll be a process of us going like, hmm, that's not a good investment. We already have a trail on that, along that corridor. There's no need to duplicate it at the sidewalk.
Okay.
But the question was just sidewalks, sort of, generically speaking.
Okay, no, that's fine. Questions from members of council? Councilor Bettos?
Yeah, just, just an observation. I'm actually quite astounded by the, the priority one in cycling is 1% or 2%.
Yeah.
Which is extremely low. Elisa Helps of Victoria would not be happy with those numbers. And same with patterns and challenges. I mean, bikes, 1% or 2%, I just find that interesting. Nothing we can do. That's the facts, so, but it was quite an interesting observation.
What I might add to that is I was fairly pleased with the response rate we got on our survey. We had 350 or so responses, which sort of gives some weight to some of the feedback we're receiving, is that it is, it's not representing the whole community by any means, but it's a pretty good representation.
Councilor McMath, then St. Pierre, then Bateman?
It's funny that you say that's a good representation, because I was gonna say the opposite. Because that's not even 2%.
Yeah.
And that's one engagement portion out of three. And so if 360 is your best number by a long shot, that's only 2% of the community. So when you are looking for community engagement, how are you, how are you going after it? I know we posted it on our website. We got one email out to ourselves. But other than that, how are you actively getting people to contribute to that? Because I don't think it's fair to say that that's a good representation.
Yeah, I mean, next round of engagement will be in the fall. And I guess, I mean, still to be determined exactly how we publicize and promote those events. I believe last time we had information on the website. We had the, in the newspaper, there was a notification, I believe. Otherwise, yeah, I mean, if there's suggestions on how to get more widespread understanding these events are happening, we could definitely take those in for next time.
Yeah, because basically, any social media platform you can get onto, and if the district can help you, can help you with that. Like, that's really what, it's hard to, when you have, like, your charts and your stats are beautiful, and they are informative, and it's great because it's immeasurable. It's a place to start.
Good.
But it's hard to take them seriously when it's not even 2% of the, of, of the group that's, that's included in it. So as Gorg just said, it is, it's, it's not really, there's nothing substantial, really, for the community. Not to say that the rest of the population wouldn't agree with the people that, you know, step forward and put their name forward, but any way that we can help you get it out to the group more and, and really increase that engagement, that's what I'd really like to, to do with you.
Yeah, okay. That sounds good. I'll probably take you up on that offer.
Yeah.
Because, yeah, I mean, and we might try and learn, I guess, from previous processes that you've run that have had good turnout, and see if there's anything we can learn from those in terms of how it's promoted or even the format of the event itself. An open house can be seen as, you know, kind of traditional and, and-
Yeah, and like some people, like, they have anxiety, and maybe they don't want to come out to that, so they prefer to, to do their thing online. So any way that we can, if we get an email list, or any way that simplifies the process for people, if it takes two seconds and they can click it and contribute, that's, I'd love to see that, yeah.
Yeah.
Get you on Snapchat.
Need some help on that one.
Yeah.
I'll go to our staff, and then I have an idea, and then the other councillors. Mr. Butterfield?
Yeah, I just want to add to Dan's answer. We probably went out more than any other project that has been here in the last few years. We did talk with the community groups, one-on-one, stakeholder groups. We did advertise not the SUCC Mirror, both online and paper, as well as the Times-Colonist, and send out email groups, emails, emails about everything, including the survey, twice to all of the email lists that we could find that we had for groups and community organizations, as well as stakeholder groups like sports clubs and bike clubs as well. So we, we took a wide approach to this and probably advertised it as far as the feedback I received from staff, more than anything else we've ever done in the past.
The follow-up, Councilor McMath?
If I can help you expand those lists, and then I would love to, so if you can share those with me, and then if I can, I'll just give you as many. So basically, the more we can get it out, the better. Because I just, I would hate to hear at the end of all this, it was like, well, I had no idea there was a stakeholder thing, right? And I, as like, a moderately young person, I only-
I'm a young as per.
Not anymore, but I'm clinging. I really only saw one, only one thing caught my eye, and that was the email that came to, to my council thing. So just reading off that, I would say with my-ish group, we could do a little more. And I'm happy to help. I'm not, I'm not criticizing or anything, but if I can help you get access to things, I would love to.
I totally look forward to that.
Okay.
Okay, Councilor St. Pierre, then Bateman?
I noted that, well, actually, you noted, that notably the 19 and under crowd was absent, for the most part, from the proceedings. I'm curious about that, because you actually do your thing at EMCS, and they should have had decent access at that point in time, but they still didn't participate, which is kind of frustrating. But I'm suspecting also that your 1% to 2% on cycling might have something to do with that. That if you're not accessing the kids, in some ways, you're not accessing the cyclists and the people that are gonna be using the trails and bicycles. But in terms of actually overcoming that kind of an issue, there's actually a lot of information out there in terms of cycling habits and how people, you know, what will actually allow people to cycle more. For example, we know that we have bike racks that are not hidden away in a car park somewhere, where their bikes can be stolen, then people are more likely to actually use their bikes. There's a number of different things that can be done in that direction. I'm suggesting, I guess, that although we can go to the- I guess, that although we can go to the community and ask their advice, there's also just amazing information that's just sitting out there. So I would suggest, you've probably already done it, but a literature review, and please include some of that information, because obviously, the future is gonna involve probably, you know, using our trails for cycling and trying to make it easier for our people to make use of that option. The other thing that I would request is, the graphics, I suspect, also came from your, your software, I don't know what you call
The, the map with the dots?
Yeah, the map with the dots, and the, and the bar charts, and so on and so forth. Useful to have legends or exactly what is on the axes, even if it's mentioned in the text what it might be about, just laying it out. Also, I found that the specific ones that had, you know, first, second, third priority with percentages, were a little challenging to interpret in terms of what it actually meant. So if there's some way to actually clarify some of that information, especially since this is gonna go out to the community, I would appreciate that.
Okay. Yeah, good comment.
Thanks.
Councilor Bateman?
Okay, thank you for your presentation, Mr. Casey. Yeah, in terms of, of community input, you know, it's always pretty tricky. I noted that in the, the current Transportation Master Plan had a grand total of forty responses, and those were generated from three open houses. So, three hundred and whatever you're at, three forty-six, is, is not bad, so we're off and running. I think the key point is, regardless of community input, this needs to be a very complete transportation plan that deals with our road network, cycling paths and trails, pedestrian trails and transit. So regardless of what the people of Sook have to say about this, we as a council and staff need to come up with your immense assistance with, with a plan that works for the short, medium and longer terms. I, I'm sure you're very familiar by now with the two thousand and nine Transportation Master Plan. Can you share some thoughts on it? And it's a very ambitious schedule of
Yeah.
Of change.
A good, good synopsis of that, too. I, I was involved in the team that helped produce the two thousand and nine plan. Yeah, yeah, that's, it was my previous life, I was a lot younger then. I was also involved on the team that produced the Town Center Plan around the, right in around the same time. I remember the public engagement sessions. So we had at that time, I don't, not sure if anyone else was involved at that point in time, but it was OCP review, Parks and Trails Master Plan, Sook Town Center Plan, plus Transportation Master Plan, all as part of a fairly, this is my recollection, a fairly coordinated initiative, kind of like we're doing with parks and trails and transportation right now. And those open houses, they had so much information for people to take in and absorb, and, and really to sort of, there were a lot of professionals representing a lot of different expertise and background in the room. And it was disheartening, actually, I remember how, how few people actually attended and sort of took advantage of the opportunity that they had. So, yeah, there's that. And then with the Transportation Master Plan itself, the two thousand, the existing one, my feeling at the time, and still is, is that it was calling for a lot of expenditure on things in a fairly short timeframe, some of which, like, what I, when we produce these, what I like to do is, rather than tie it to it's gonna be done in five years, or it's going to be done in ten years, you need to start establishing budget to do that, there's triggers. If this happens, you know, in the five to ten-year window, in the ten to twenty-year window, then you're gonna wanna do that. You're gonna wanna put in that signal, you're gonna wanna punch through a new road connection. But tie it to development happening, or certain traffic conditions actually being experienced, or cycling, increase in, in the number of cyclists hitting a certain threshold, that's when you start to invest, rather than just sort of blindly do it based on a, on a, on a annual or a yearly timeline that's being created. So, I guess my thoughts on that plan is, there's a lot of pieces that we'll be able to bring forward and keep on the table for consideration as part of this work, but that there's a lot, there was a lot that was asked for in that plan, that's not totally surprising that, that a fair bit of it hasn't been done.
Another question, without a new official community plan, do you find it difficult to make these kind of housing projections over the, because this, our OCP will undoubtedly follow themes in the current OCP, so you can project out of that, I suppose.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a little bit difficult, but we've kind of done it. In a way, there's, there is the ability, if, if the OCP process, which I understand might be happening in the next couple of years, does a, yeah, okay, takes a hard pivot and takes another direction from what we've planned for, there is the ability to rerun some of the analysis that's behind our road network modeling in, in particular. And just to maybe give us all some comfort that there isn't a need to change course drastically in the Transportation Master Plan. By drastically, I mean, not improve an intersection we might have thought we needed to, or vice versa, that, that sort of thing. There is the ability to go back. I would only, it's not me, but I would only suggest going back, if there's a real change of course from, from the kinds of numbers that are behind the work that we're doing. And staff will have those numbers, so there can be some cross comparison a couple of years down the line, or what have you. Yeah.
Just a quick one, this new mobility you speak of, tell, tell us more about that.
Sure. You caught me with my lingo there. It's referring to things like electric bicycles, electric vehicles, ride hailing, if and when that becomes an actual mode of transport here, consideration of autonomous vehicles.
What's an autonomous vehicle?
Self-driving.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So, it's, it's all of that, and it's, I mean, when we get into road network, pedestrian network, cycling network, those are real, those are very predictable, because we have a whole history to look back on and see how things have progressed or not. New mobility is kind of referring to things that are only very recently became real, or haven't even become real yet. So it's a bit of sort of future-proofing in a way, and not, I guess I would come back to that discussion about tying investment or tying action to conditions that are actually realized, not just saying in ten years, you're gonna need to respond to autonomous vehicles, that's something I, we don't know when that's coming. So we don't wanna be blind or ignorant to it, but we probably don't wanna be, at this point in time, investing real money into it either. So that's, that's new mobility. And it's, it's the idea that mobility is, demand for mobility is met a lot more flexibly, and a lot less reliant on traditional, single-occupant vehicles than it has been in the past. Yeah. So there'd be some direction coming forward on that, that I'm, I'm really curious to test with this group and with the community, and sort of see what the receptiveness is.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Councilor St. Pierre?
That was a really interesting answer. And I'm curious about electric vehicles, because although they're just coming, I mean, they're not just coming, they're on the market, they're getting, becoming endemic, they're everywhere, and we can only expect that to go further. Will your plan include things like EV infrastructure, built into, you know, road networks and so on and so forth, projecting, you know, I don't know, where we need charging stations, how many, so on and so forth?
Yes, it, it is gonna get into that. The EV equation is making them more affordable, which you can't do too much about as a municipality, and then it's about being able to charge them, and that's, that's where your ability to influence comes in. So we're gonna, we're gonna provide some direction on that, for sure. Yeah. But the challenge is, it's not cheap, and it's also, until we get to metering EV charging stations, someone pays for that power. So these are discussions that are gonna be in there, on how you work within those challenges. Yeah.
Okay, a couple of final things. In terms of transit planning, Transit is working on our local area plan, so are you consulting with them on what their findings are as well?
Yes.
Okay.
So they attended, a few of their staff members attended our engagement activities in, in January, February. And then I attended their workshop in, I think it was late February, it might have been early March. So there's definitely some, some crossover there. And we're gonna take their cue, in terms of route planning and service levels and things like that.
Yeah.
But also with the understanding, there's a lot of integration potential between modes, and that the majority of that's gonna actually come out of the Transportation Master Plan.
Okay. And then, in terms of ideas, one thing I've learned from hosting students here is, like, a lot of our young students in the, in the elementary schools, they do walk, they explore on the trail system. There's the outdoor classes, and they walk from Poyet to Municipal Hall and back again. Sook Elementary does as well, they have classes out and about. And so they're very, very excited about the trail network that we're developing. And then, of course, the students then go home and have their parents go out and explore the trails with them. So in talking to some of the principals, we were talking about some of the upcoming OCP work and the like, and there's a possibility for us to engage with the students at the school and to have them involved in the project, but then also to have an open house at the school. So then, on another date, the student can go home and share with their parents what's happening, and then invite mom and dad back to the school at pickup time, and have the gymnasium. So that's right there, an opportunity to engage with the demographic that's just very busy. Like, they're working, they have a lot on the go, but we need to hear from them. So that might be an opportunity is to build something through the schools, perhaps. And I was thinking of my younger years, probably the most effective engagement, I can't believe I'm saying this out loud, is the ads that were on the back of bathrooms doors. They're like, right there, in front of your face. And I noticed some of our, our restaurants and pubs and the like are still using that as a strategy. So, through the chamber, if it's some way, it's like, here's a code that you scan with your phone, and it takes you to something. I don't know, might be a way of reaching that younger demographic.
I got carbonated.
There's a lot of chatter in washrooms, there still is. And then also, we have the Sook Night Market throughout the summer. Summer's difficult, because people wanna break, but if there's an opportunity even for council to consider some sort of a pop-up, you know, I know with our OCP planning, we did some of that, so there was a way just to hear from locals that are there, as well as some visitors that are there. There's also the Saturday Market, which is very popular, that will run almost all the way through to Thanksgiving. Outside of Shopper's Drug Mart, those of us that were campaigning, I know it's a good way to, to meet and talk to people, it's usually sunny, and there's room there. And also the hockey program, if there's some way, if, if you were looking, if we were looking to get more engagement in another ad, is somehow in, in the world of hockey. Because I know a lot of parents are there, and they're chatting about all sorts of things locally, and it might capture another audience. So just, just some ideas there. And then, just with the way this is scanned in, half the presentation is portrait, and then it changes to landscape. And with this program, I have no way of, of rotating this at all. So is there some way that this can be, like, like, you can't, there's, there's nothing
I can do.
I know. Like, it's not, it's because it's, it's, you can't, like, so I can't
Councilor McMath can show it.
I don't know, it's just my gripe with technology, I just can't look at it, because it's the wrong way in. And it's, it's, you know, and then you turn it, and you try to lock, but this turns with it, it doesn't, it's very frustrating. I either need a lesson, or this needs to be scanned a different way, the whole way. So, if that would be awesome, I'd appreciate it. Anything else from anyone?
Third.
Okay, so at this point, we're just looking for a motion to receive the update, I suppose, moved by Councilor McMath. Anything further from members of council? Call a question, then all those in favor, opposed, it's carried unanimously. And thank you very much for your work on this important file for us, Mr. Casey, yourself and your team. I was here, I was just exchanging looks with Ms. Laura Hooper, because I remember those, that suite of documents, but they did come out quite quickly, so I like the approach that we're taking this time around. All right, we'll see you again. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, next item up is our tree management bylaws. So this follows a notice of motion that Councilor Parkinson had put forward, and that council had endorsed. And so we're looking for an update on this. So I'll turn this over to Ms. Hooper, and welcome.
Thank you very much. Turn the microphone on, so you can actually hear me. So, as your worship and council alluded to, that we did have a notice of motion from Councilor Parkinson in November of 2018, asking that staff come back with a tree regulation, or some ideas for a tree protection bylaw, or a tree management bylaw. So that's what I'll talk to you about today. I just have a quick presentation, once I figure out where to point this.
Dawn's blocked it with a chair.
All right. Well, thankfully, I might be better with trees and technology, just like you, yeah. So, an overview of what I intend to talk about today. It's a little bit of a background of why we're here, the current state of our environment, how we propose to talk about it, and what different parameters we can discuss in future open houses, stakeholder engagement, et cetera. And then provide with, to you a timeline for drafting a bylaw, should you choose to move forward with that. So, after the notice of motion was put forward by Councilor Parkinson in November, there was a lot of phone calls, as you can imagine. There was concern as, from before the, the notice of motion for significant trees, such as large cedars, maples, arbutus, oaks, firs and spruces, so the big natives, the very common natives. Especially removals from trees from shorelines, so that fifteen-meter setback that is protected by our zoning bylaw. There's still people removing trees from our shoreline and causing erosion points, but also removals of trees adjacent to streams within that thirty-meter setback. Also, there was concern for the timing of tree removals. So, when people were removing trees during nesting habitat, or nesting periods for small songbirds, not only the larger raptors like herons, eagles, which are protected under other laws, but for those small songbirds that were getting obliterated when large trees were being removed. But also, the community's identity, where, where the rainforest meets the sea. And it seems that we are removing an inordinate number of trees. So, those large-scale removals, combined with timings where there was habitat destruction and loss, and also removal of those trees from the shoreline, was the reason why this notice of motion came forward. So, in doing a little bit of research of the thirteen-member municipalities in the CRD, we've discovered that there are a range of protection, from protect everything, like the District of Sanage, to protect nothing, which is what we're currently doing. And of the thirteen-member municipalities, the District of Sook is currently the only municipality that doesn't afford some level of protection to trees in the municipality. But we have a long history, and that's something we have to remember, I believe, as we move forward. The District of Sook and the Sook region was built on forestry. In the nineteen, early nineteen hundreds, we had the first sawmill in British Columbia. And up until about a decade ago, that's how most of our residents made their living. But now, times have changed. I'll just, industry, as I mentioned, was one of the reasons that this town was built. And that's just a shot of the Goodridge Peninsula and all the log booms, probably in the nineteen fifties. But now, we have a new culture and a new economy. You can see Premier Horgan using a crosscut saw to cut some sod of a turf field. But we also have beers named after springboards and IPAs, the Springboard IPA. But we also see tourism as a result of the very large trees and natural habitat we have. This is a screenshot from Google Earth in nineteen eighty-four, and I'm just gonna pan through by the decade to show you. In twenty, thirty short years, we've seen that our tree cover loss has decreased. Now, these numbers paint a little bit of a story. It shows that we've lost two percent of our forest cover between nineteen eighty-six and two thousand and eleven. But what's most upsetting, or maybe not upsetting, but telling a little bit of a tale, is that when you look at Callwood and Langford and View Royal, look at the tree cover loss that they've had over that same period. They are, experienced during that period, the pressures that we're about to experience, one would argue, from development. Two percent loss, that's not bad, but twenty-four, twenty-five percent cover loss, they didn't have bylaws to protect their forest cover at that point. So we are poised to protect a lot of trees at this juncture. The spirit of other bylaws in the CRD, we've enclosed three of them in your package, was to protect either specific species of trees, like native species, specific sizes of trees, the diameter, breast height, or even some bylaws protected certain heights of trees, say, two to three meters and higher, of certain native species. There's also bylaws like Machosen that just protected, or that protected some native species dependent on size, but then every species, if they were significantly large, say, eighty to a hundred centimeters diameter, breast height, those are the big trees. They also protect trees They also protect trees in environmentally sensitive areas, like I suggested, around the shorelines, riparian areas, sensitive areas such as steep slopes. And in some situations where there's large lots, large rural areas, allowed a certain number of trees to be removed annually. So large lots in Sook Hills, perhaps you're able to remove, or not Sook Hills, but say Highlands, remove 50 to 100 trees per year without a permit. There's also special provisions for hazard trees and building permits, so that you're not tying the hands of the developers, as the case may be. So let's talk about it. Moving forward, if council gives that direction, these are the types of things that we need to talk about to see what kind of tree protection bylaw, if any, the District of Sook would like to move forward with. There's a lot of things to talk about. We need to think about the trees, the parcel size, annual cuts allowable on large lots, sensitive areas, what kind of permitting process, if, and what kind of fees and penalties, et cetera. There's a lot to talk about, those exemptions where we would like to have them. For example, none of this would apply to agricultural land reserve lots, as the current laws prevent us from saying anything about those things. And then engagement and consultation. Based on your direction, we can move forward in either immediately or in the fall and start stakeholder engagement, talk to those large lot owners, talk to other landowners around the community, see what they would like to have happen, and then do surveys, get some education out there. We have many different opportunities, but it is staff's opinion that good engagement, meaningful engagement, and good education along, around what we're talking about, is vital for any success of any bylaw. So with that, I'll end my formal presentation and put forward to you the resolutions in front of you and answer any questions you might have.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Hooper, for your work on this. I think it's a great way to get us going. My recommendation would be that, though, any, aside from maybe some items at the night market, that the real public engagement should not happen over the summer. People are busy, they're away, they're not here, so the fall might be better unless there's an opportunity to grab something at the night market. That's kind of when everyone is like, okay, back to work, back to everything. And so just sort of put that out there for that. Councilor Betos.
Yeah, I'll lead off. I just put some things to consider. You mentioned here in, on page 15, the report, while the city of Langford does not have a general tree cutting bylaw, it does control the cutting of trees and the removal of vegetation in designated environmentally sensitive and hazardous development permit areas. And it gives some examples. In your thing up above, you say that principals in the Sanage, Callwood and Machosen bylaw. I'd like you to include Langford in there. I don't know how they do it, maybe you could find out.
Sure.
How they control it, and maybe a mix of those two would be better, but do consider it, please. The other thing on page 15, Article 2, and it mentions about the significant trees. Oaks are not significant trees for Sook, they're not indigenous to Sook, so you might not want to have those in there. They were not in the ecosystem of Gary Oaks, believe it or not. The other thing is, you see, you've got concerns raised for the urban forest. And I can't help but notice, but are you 1, 2, 3 and 4, which is the vast majority of those great big lots that are colored green in our map? The primary use of those lots are agriculture. Now agriculture and trees don't necessarily go together, and my concern is, if you remember back a few years, the Vander Kirkhoff behind the General Hospital took down acres and acres of those trees there, took every one of them down. And he could do that because it was classed as farm, agricultural land. And my concern is that if that's not addressed in the tree bylaw, it doesn't matter what tree bylaw we have it, if you say it's agricultural land, it does give that person sort of the right to, well, it's agricultural land, I need to clear land to make room for crops. So with that being said, what I was also considering is, you know, we're going to go out to the consultation process with people, and I firmly believe in that, and don't get me wrong, I'm not dead set against this, it's just that some things have to be considered. But we're going to go out for a new OCP, and my feeling is with council, we want to move on that very, very quickly. Would it not be better rather than spend $5,000 in a separate consultation to mold it in, just what your opinion on that, by the way, mold it in with the OCP and have it looked at during that? That's where we got engagement to people, or is that not a good idea? I'm just throwing things out there.
I'll defer to who's not here behind me. That's something to consider, for sure. It might be something that we could do at the same time while we have the groups of people, when we're doing parks, trails, master planning, transportation, master planning. We don't want to burn our engagement out, but it's something to consider.
Okay, that's all the ask it is, that it be considered, because, you know, we're spending $5,000, it's not a terrible lot of money, but it is still money, and it's taxpayers' money, and if we can do it more efficiently, I'm all for doing it that way. The other thing I would like you to look at too, is if you could come up with, or ask somewhere along the line about liabilities, if we do refuse somebody to cut down a tree and it falls down and kills their cat or whatever it is the next day, are we liable to be sued? Even though as they say, it's a healthy tree, but you know what the winds are like around here. So I would like to have a little bit of a background on liabilities. The other thing is staff costs, when it comes to whatever you come up with, and I assume you're going to come up with something that is probably going to be palatable to a lot of people. We do need to know what the staff ramifications are and what the costs are. I mean, we use an example that we have a sort of an arborist here now, but if we did use them in the trees, then that person is not available for duties that they were doing before, we have to hire somebody. So I'd like to know those results. Other than that, carry on with it, thanks.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Betos. Councilor St. Pierre.
Councilor Betos covered a lot of the ground that I was thinking about. I did notice when I was looking at the three bylaws, that I was hoping that anything that we crafted would be extremely approachable, more approachable if possible than what I was reading.
Okay.
I think part of actually making this work with anybody, but, you know, especially our community, is just making sure that our bylaws are really simple to interpret, that the layperson can actually look at and understand what's going on. You know, two pages of specialized terminology followed by 23 pages of, yeah, that was, you know, three times over, that's just crazy talk. And I know that might be what's needed on some levels, but if we can actually make this more approachable, that would be lovely. I liked what Callwood did in terms of some of their work in terms of the structure. I'm curious as to why the fees vary so widely, but that's something that we can certainly talk about.
Yep.
One of the things that I'm interested about is what's the goal of our public consultation? Certainly, we've got some really good models from, you know, different other municipalities, and as long as you know clearly what our goals are, I mean, we're trying to clarify our goals with the public, I can see that.
Yep.
But I think that even then, we actually have a fair idea of why we'd be moving ahead with the tree bylaw, so we actually know what our goals are, at which point, it feels like the consultation is perhaps more in terms of actually education and letting people know this is what we're about to do, as opposed to asking what we're going to do. And so I think it'd be nice to just be, you know, clear on that, because then we might potentially spend that $5,000 differently than in a public engagement where we're looking for information back. And it may not be politically correct, but it might be just more efficient in terms of getting the message out.
Okay.
I was also interested to note that in a little booklet that I read, written by Maywell Wickham, he pointed out that prior to the settlers, you had vast tracts of agricultural land that were cleared by the sulk, by burning. And that following the British showing up, who decided they didn't like the smoke in the air, everything started getting overgrown, which is part of the reason why you have so much green and less agriculture. I don't know that that's necessarily, I don't know that a direction where we keep all that green is necessarily what we want directly around Sook, where we have a growing population that needs food. So I think we have to also balance that out. I think that we need to keep Sook beautiful, we need to preserve significant trees, we need to preserve riparian areas, we need to do all that stuff. At the same time, we have to decide, you know, when are we going to reduce our carbon footprint by growing food close to where we are? And so I think that needs to be just considered.
Okay.
Councilor Bateman.
Yeah, I'd like to see you flip back a few slides to those items for discussion.
Oh.
Oh.
I'll stop touching it, sir.
They're in the package, so I could cite them. I'm just hoping that we'll have a chance, as a council, to go through each of these in turn. You begin with species of tree, and Councilor Betos made a good point. I don't know, are there some Gary Oak, kind of B-SU?
There are a few small, there's a few small in the rock outcrops, but not many, as you're right, I could count them probably in two or three hands.
So I noted the Callwood and Sanage, Callwood borrowed from Sanage. I actually sat and watched the Callwood deliberations. They had a task force that they struck early last year, and they met and they had a public, the whole process. So I like that we can borrow from the good work done by our neighbors. So that they had, what, they had three trees at quite modest DBH, right? And then the Douglas firs were in at about 30 centimeters, and then all trees larger than 60 centimeter diameter were to be protected. I noted you cited 80 to 100.
Those were the significant trees only.
Yeah, so interestingly, in other communities, I've noted, significant trees are not necessarily based on size alone, but they also have their particular type of tree, a rare species, or they have some sort of local significance, such as our trees maybe at Evergreen Mall, or at Cedar Grove Mall, the site too, that have, yeah, anyway, there's that. So significant trees. Timing of removal, I noted that in the Powell River example, because there's so many, you know, it's amazing number of municipalities, I tried to find out how many in Canada have these tree bylaws, tree protection bylaws, I couldn't find out, but I think they're pretty normative. And so wildlife tree, in terms of timing of removal to protect nesting or roosting species, BC's Wildlife Tree Classification System does have a guidelines for protection of those particular kinds of trees. You ask about zoning, and I note that many of these, or the few that I managed to have a look at, without being hyperbolic, they protect across all zones. And of course, there are exemptions for agricultural land. Yeah, so I'm hoping that we can have a chance to really work through in depth here, or is this a process whereby staff brings a draft bylaw and at that point, we get to move into this process?
Well, and that's part of that stakeholder engagement, and maybe that's something we can hash out here, if you wanted a task force, for example, or another committee, the whole meeting, where we go in after some stakeholder engagements and public surveys, where we whetled it down to some, something that you can then engage upon. I really don't know what's best moving forward, it's how you're feeling about it as well. No answer in there.
Okay. I'd just follow up on a couple of Councilor Betos' points. I do agree, we need to mold, potentially mold it in with other public engagement processes. I would disagree with the Langford model. You know, what I see in Langford, when I drive down the West Shore Parkway, are great clear-cut swaths with not a tree standing, and, you know, there are many other examples of communities, I think, where we could take, take good guidance. Not to, not to be insulting to Langford, but, and in terms of the bylaws, I do like a good meaty bylaw, and at the same time, it needs to be backed up with really good public education materials and website. You know, I went to the city of Burnaby today, their website, and click on tree bylaw, and you have this beautiful series of direct, with-depth links to go to, and, yeah. So that's it for me.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor McMath, please.
Why did you choose those three municipalities? That's a great question. We chose Machosen as it was a very rural municipality, somewhat similar to ours in its, other than the Gary Oaks, in its, in its native species, et cetera, very coastal, having a lot of riparian areas. And also the fact that they are able to protect without a lot of staff. They are, they have some decent bylaws with a limited number of staff. And then we looked to Callwood and looked at the pressures that they were seeing with development, and thought that that was a good middle-of-the-road kind of bylaw that also not only looked at native species, but the height of species. And then we looked at the Sanage one, because we felt that that was the protect everything bylaw. We sort of felt Callwood was more of a middle-of-the-road and Machosen was less arduous. There are 13, and as Jeff, Councilor Bateman, suggested, hundreds of bylaws to choose from. And which we don't necessarily need to move forward with today, with direction on one particular bylaw, that motion could be ignored or not put forward.
I'm just curious, because, so like, all three of them seem very pro-tree protection, which I'm not anti. It's just, if you're going to have a spread to look at, you've definitely chosen the ones that...
They're all very pro-tree protection.
Except Langford?
There isn't actually a bylaw that.
Okay. And then, my next question is, when you talk about you're going to invite the public and stakeholders, how are you qualifying like a stakeholder in this conversation?
We haven't figured that out yet. We'll do some staff brainstorming, try to figure that out, reach out to the community, try to figure out who those stakeholders are. We know those will be large lot owners, we'll be, know that there's people who do farming, there will be woodlot owners, all these different types. We just haven't gotten that far.
Okay. Because I, basically, where I'm going with this, I just don't want it to be, I want it to be as objective as possible.
Yes.
I totally, I love this idea and I'm very supportive of it, but right now, it's not being framed in the most like objective of ways, so the stakeholders that you just mentioned, like you didn't talk about developers.
Exactly.
And obviously, they're not going to be pro-tree protection, but they should still be at the table. And I just, I don't want that to be missed. And then if we, so we go forward with this, and you have the $5,000 for public and stakeholder engagement, and we start to move forward, and you touched on this with Machosen, I just want more information on that, if we go through with this, do we have the resources to, we create all these bylaws, do we have the resources to execute and actually?
Exactly.
Yeah.
So that's the intention, is that we come up with what the community and the stakeholders want, and then we figure out how we can resource it appropriately. And then from there, perhaps we pare it back or we amp it up. I don't know how this is going to turn out. A suggestion might be that we come up with information packages where you come back to council at each juncture and for approval to carry on and carry on. That might be a way to ensure that staff doesn't lose track of where council wants them to go. Okay, I'm okay for now.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, Councilor. Just a few comments. You know, I agree with having developers there, just sometimes I think they, sometimes, not all, lose sight that the trees that are existing on the property, if they actually had a way of weaving those trees into the design of the property, the properties that they're trying to sell will be more attractive and would actually be sold at a higher market price. But it just seems they come in and then clear-cut it all, burn the rest, and then, in some cases, the sites sit for five, 10 years, they all turn into broom, and then that's, that's all we have, are these broom fields and these beautiful trees, and then that plan is abandoned, something else is different, that, oh, we're going to have these large trees there, and it's like, well gee, if you only went back X amount, you actually could have preserved some of them and built them into the character of the property. There's also the concern, I mean, in some cases, you know, I heard, oh, well, some people need to, you know, cut down some trees and they need to sell that, fine, I totally get that, but then why is it they've cut everything down and month after month? Nothing's moved, it's all just sitting around, and it's a concern that it becomes a fire hazard, which it has that potential, and so I don't get why anything was cut down, because it's all sitting there in the exact same spot, just kind of rotting away, so there's no value after a while. And then there's other parcels of land that are selling, and in some cases, perhaps I hear that such-and-such foreign investors bought that, and they could come in and just cut everything down, and what about the habitat, the wildlife, the wind exposure on family, the nature? and the nature of the area, and all of that? So that, in some ways, is sort of why I'm supporting a move into this direction, because there's nothing in place. And then I heard a comment when we were a bit behind on the building permits, that someone was like, well, I really need to get my permit, because the eagles are going to nest in this tree, and I need to be able to take the tree down before they do that. And I thought, well, you know, having a big eagle's nest would be an attract, again, another attractive component to the site, like, why would you want to remove that? And then in that case, you know, like, I don't think there's anyone's going to be, like, you've said that out loud? And so in that case, like, there's some things, like, you know, this beautiful, and I don't know what type of species it was, but the eagles have been there much longer, you know, 20-some years, massive nest, and just got to get rid of it, and move. So that's where I think there needs to be something. And then we hear about the sites that Counselor Bateman referred to, and mourning the loss of these, and I agree, because then if there was something, it would give us just more when a developer says, we want to do X. Right now, there's nothing. So they're looking at just a plot of land, and not what the character, the three-dimensional of that land is, whereas if we actually had something like, okay, we want to do this, but these four trees. So now it just puts us in a better position to sort of say, well, there's this character of the site. And I think having trees around are an attractive element, their habitat, and there's something, you know, I live in a subdivision, and it's going to take quite some time before anything grows, where if I visit someone else that has these well-established trees, you know, like, wow, what a difference in the character of the property. It'll take another 10, 20 years before any of our trees get to be that height, but if there was one or two left behind, that would have been a nice feature to have. And it's a natural asset that would add value, shade, all those things, character to the property. So I would welcome, you know, to have the, have feedback from developers, and I think when you, all these shows that you have on House Hunters and the like, it's all about the curb appeal, and the shade in the backyard, and what sort of environment, what sort of ecosystem, like, that's what people are drawn to looking for. So in some ways, it needs to be there, and we're sort of losing that. Counselor Beddoes, I believe, had another comment?
Yeah, I have to defend myself. My call's... I'm sorry. First of all, I have to agree that it, we need to engage everybody, and the developers and the builders in this town need to have a say, too. And my experience is, some of the develop, I know there's going to be the unscrupulous ones, but most of them will play ball, and most of them are interested in the same sort of things we are, because a lot of them live here in this community. So I don't want to paint them all as evil. I know running through Langford scares hell out of me, and that's where my next comment comes from. I never said to adopt Langford's rules. I just said, have a look, have a look at them, and see how they protect some of those ecosystems that desperately need protecting. I, too, go through Langford, and I just shake my head. I'm sure there's a lot of people just rave about it, but that's not the community that I want, and it's not the community my family wants. So, but we do have to look at what they've encountered, and I agree that we need to have a balance here, and that's the most important thing, is that there's going to be a lot of people, and I heard the same comment the mayor was, when we heard about that eagle's nest. There was some people saying, you bring a tree bylaw in, and I tell you, a week before it comes in, I'm cutting every goddamn tree down on the property to get ahead of it. But that's the fear, hey? And so if we engage people, and say, just a sec, no, we're not going to, we're not going to force you to pay $75 a tree, and you've got 300 trees on the property, we're going to be reasonable about this, then, but that's the most important part, is the dialogue, and I think we're getting together on this, that that is going to be a very important stage. And, yeah, so, here, here's my comments.
Counselor St. Pierre, then, McMath?
Just thought I should note, in terms of the developers, almost all the bylaws actually had some pretty clear guidelines in terms of, you know, how a property could be developed in terms of the footprint of the home and trees. Purmits would automatically be provided even for, you know, special trees, if it was, you know, sitting right where you're going to put your home. So I don't think the developers are necessarily going to be penalized in any particular way by any of the iterations of bylaws that I actually saw. What I do also note is that whenever you bring in heavy equipment, you're likely to crush roots, you're likely to do damage. It becomes very, very difficult, as soon as you have heavy equipment, to actually preserve the trees, which is, I think, why often they all go, because trying to just thread the needle with, you know, a backhoe is just not necessarily that simple. And so I think that's why developers tend to just clear it all off, even when it might be preferable to spend that extra time, keep that tree that might actually improve the look of the place.
No, and I totally hear that, but not all of them have done that. So clearly, some have with that, the element of the character in mind, and others are like, well, we'll just knock them all down, and we'll just sit there and... Yeah. Counselor McMath and Bateman?
Which is why I want them at the table, because it's not, it's really easy to villainize them, but they're, like, Counselor Beddoes touched on, you start to say tree bylaw, there have been a lot of clearings just off that motion coming forward, because there's, like, granted, it's this awkward time in between, but there is a fear, where it's like, I'm going to have to pay $50 per tree, for every tree, because every tree is special. That lack of communication, that lack of engagement, it causes panic, and so, which ends up costing more trees. So if they're not at the table, it's not actually beneficial to the group, it's much more beneficial for the community to have them there, so that we're clear on what the expectations are, what the costs are. And it's also like, a reminder, like, this area that we are sitting in this building in was completely forested before. So you can't stop development, but what this bylaw will do is help shape that, so that the way that we progress complements the community. So it is really important to have them at the table, and it's really important not to villainize them. And it is really easy to do, and I just want to make sure that we stay away from that.
No, I agree with you. I just, I just think that there are some that are, that do excellent work, and I, but I would put a few in the villainous category. Counselor Bateman?
Yes, in any given cohort, there are heroes and villains, and people who are just quietly going about their business. So I think as we move forward, I've got here a printout of the Sanich Tree Protection Bylaw. Considerations for building... Yes, I did. I did, I'll be recycling this paper later. And I'm old, so these sort of things are important to me. So this is considerations for building on a site with trees. So there's lots of best practices that we can share, we don't need to invent any, is wheel the right word?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, wheel, when we go forward with this. The interesting thing in doing some research, there was, people have a deep attachment to the trees. So in, many of these tree bylaws go, keep at really reasonable costs, very simple and effective bylaw that works for homeowners, and it's a little more stringent when it comes to people with larger properties and to developers. And I would suggest that we ensure that people have the right to take down a tree, whether it's protected or special, if indeed is a danger to their home, or cat, or car. And at the same time, ensure that we do best practices on, so that we don't lose trees off slopes of some of our significant viewpoints, and, yeah. So I have great trust in staff to come up with the, the perfect tree protection bylaw for the people of...
Perfect one for us.
Perfect one for us.
So I'd like to see if there's anyone, members of the public, that would like to speak on this, and I neglected to do this with the transportation master plan. So if anyone would like to make comment on both the tree management bylaw and the transportation management plant, master plan, this would be a good time for both of those topics.
Thank you for that. Yeah, on both of them, I would like to see them involved in the OCP's discussion, and we did have tree bylaw discussion, the OCP, in 2002 and 2009. And rather than tree cutting, it's tree protection. And we talked about, we talked about that, I remember in the 2009, we talked about giving tax incentives to people to keep trees, especially along Suk Road, because that's the attraction, especially through Susinus. And when you go up, I was really disappointed, I took my husband up Phillips Road, trying to find the big trees, and there's nothing, there's houses right up to the road. It's horrible, horrible. It's total destruction. And we talk about climate change, we talk about all the things that are happening in the world, and we keep taking down the trees, the trees are what creates the water, and if we don't have the trees, we're definitely going to change what's happening in our, in our area. In our OCP, it also does say that it's, there's protection, not protection, that when we do development, we should be enhancing what's already there. It's just creeks, rivers, streams, rock-out croppings, trees, it doesn't say trees, but should. If there's something significant in that development area, enhance it. Don't cover up the creeks, and don't overdo it, like we did on Denman there, and put the guy out of business, but enhance it, that you don't have to have all these rocks and all this sort of thing, let it be a little more natural. And, because that's what people come here for, is for the natural beauty, they don't come here to see the stone walls and all that sort of thing. And there, and in Langford, what I will say was kind of neat, what they did with planting the dogwoods, because Langford's always been noted for its dogwoods, that's always the neat thing driving through, or has been, driving up Suk Road through Langford and all the dogwoods. So we have to talk about that with everyone and consult, and I think that should be done through the OCP process. It's good, good to have that information that, you know, what's, what's already been done in other areas. And in Sanich, like you say, you go out there, sometimes you see where they've done, they've left the big trees in the subdivisions and things, but you also have to look at the other side. ALR land is protected, but rural lands, which aren't in the ALR, like ours, is agricultural. There might be bad years. I remember Mrs. Luntson having real bad years, her place was flooded, she couldn't get hay, so she had to go take out trees. That's civiculture, which is allowed, and it's, and it's a taxable, it's a farm allowable use. And so we have to make sure that we're not stepping on those toes. We need to have public engagement, so that we know all those things, so that it's not just, it's not cut and dried, there's a lot around it. And I, and I do appreciate trees, but as a farmer, too, sometimes the trees just get too big, and they have to come down. It's just the way it is. And so, I, yeah, I would like to see, looking with the OCP, and for the transportation as well, because where, where do we develop, and all that sort of thing. And when we do the OCP, we should also make sure the people that are involved in the OCP are involved in the zoning, so the zoning reflects what the needs are in the OCP, so it doesn't get lost. Like, like the discussion in the OCP with enhancing the areas, the rivers and the streams, rather than destroying them, that isn't in the zoning bylaw, so it doesn't get passed down, so staff can't deal with it, because it's not there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Lures. Other comments from members of the public on either of these two items? Any final thoughts from members of council? We do have a recommendation in front of us here, so let's look through them one bullet at a time. Does that work?
Sure.
Okay? Or you could just move the block. Counselor McMath is moving the block.
I, uh...
Okay, speaking to the block, I'll let Counselor McMath speak first as the mover. Would you like to motivate on the block?
I think right now, like, we've had a pretty robust conversation, and Suk has a lot to work with, and so there's not much more to touch on it, and I am happy to move forward, and I've already touched on the piece, that I want every stakeholder at the table. And that may also include having more than just the three municipalities that are listed there as a point of reference, because although we don't want to be exactly like Langford, there are some positives to touch on, like the dogwoods that were mentioned earlier.
So shall we add Langford to that, Langford et cetera? Are you Sanich, Callwood, Machosen, Langford et cetera in there? Is that friendly? We're okay with that? Okay. Counselor Beddoes is next.
Yeah, I don't agree with Counselor McMath. First of all, I would prefer to take them one at a time, and the first one, it says, guiding principles in Sanich, Callwood, and Machosen bylaws. I take that all out and say, and the principles of other municipalities. And that, then it allows you to go to Duncan, anything that you need, to get the stuff to produce a bylaw that works for us, to, and again, Langford, it doesn't matter, it's where we get it from. So out of other municipalities, I'd like to see that change in there.
Okay, so let's start with that, just a second. So we'll just take, change that out, of other municipalities. Is that friendly? I'll go to staff.
Through your worship, I believe what the intent of staff was here was to get some general direction on whether you want minimal, medium, or high protection of the tree. There, that was why Sanich, Callwood, and Machosen were put in parentheses there, to kind of choose one of those, recognizing that not one of them is going to be ideal for Suk, but just to give staff some idea of the direction that you want them to head with the level of protection you're looking at for Suk.
I don't know if that were, that were there yet. Like, in some ways, I'd like to sort of hear, sort of jump in here, I'd like to sort of hear a bit, like, sort of start some of that stakeholder conversation, where's the public landing on this? And then we can sort of, like, here's what we're hearing, and it could be something middle-of-the-road, I mean, that might be where you would need to start, and then to start a dialogue, right? And then sort of see where it comes in and where it comes back. I didn't look at it in that way, I was just looking at it as examples of places close to home, I wasn't looking at it in that way. Counselor, yeah, Counselor Beddoes?
Yes, and of course, on the second part is certainly important, we need to talk to stakeholders before we carry on too much further. But we also touched on in our guest speaker from the audience as well, about folding it into the OCP, which would negate the third thing, is the $5,000 from council contingency. I've heard a couple of people mention that might be a good way to attack it. So going back to what staff wants, small, medium, or large, sort of stuff like that, we may not be there yet, other than to me, I want it very small, the least impact on the residents of Suk as we can, understanding that there is some room for protecting. We do have to protect certain areas. I'm all for some restrictions, that you can't cut a tree down with a bird's nest in it during nesting season, things like that. But, you know, when it comes to $75 a tree, and, you know, the tree has to be 13 centimeters or 12 centimeters across, I don't need that, and I don't need the stuff about cutting all, there's a girl, I get in trouble when I say they're weeds, because they're not, they're trees, and it can be very nice. So what you have before us in the recommendation, I don't agree with any of it. I think that if we, no, we need to go back and say, yeah, you certainly have to, go ahead and continue on with what you're doing, but I think we need, before we actually make it, or we can give you that direction, I'd like to have staff look at doing it in the OCP. I'd like a little bit more on, from the other councils, on which way do we go? We want a small, medium, or large, or where are we going on this? So I cannot, I cannot support your motion.
Okay, fine. Counselor McMath, rebuttal?
I think you're way, way too far ahead. It's, right now, it's just, we're getting, like, how we discussed earlier, looking for, like, what does low, medium, and high look like? So before you get to that point, you need to see what that looks like, because I'm interested in the staffing perspective. So if we go high, is that even realistic for a management perspective? But that's what she's, they are going to bring back, that's the staff is going to bring back. The engagement process and the $5,000, that's going to get the community involved, and the community is going to say, hey, we want this, this, this. So I think you're way too far ahead in being anti-anything, because we don't have any specifics yet. And I guarantee you, all of councilors, that feel the opposite way that you feel right now. So the best choice for us right now is to get the report back on what high, medium, low protection looks like, and then move forward from there.
Counselor Beddoes?
I don't know whether you're listening to me or not, but I, I sort of spoke in favor of doing some of these things. I'm not anti-anything, I just want to deal with something logical. And if you go through with that motion, there it is, then we've committed $5,000 to the public stakeholder engagement, and I'm not for that. I think it should be done in the OCP.
My concern is, when you put it in the OCP... My concern is when you put it in the OCP, that it's going to get washed out, and it's not going to get the full attention that it deserves. So, there are so many topics that go into an OCP. I understand what you're saying, you're trying to save money from a tax perspective, but it's, it is, as far as this whole budget goes, such a small percentage out of our budget that we work with. And it's too important of a piece for this community to blend in into an OCP. It absolutely can go hand in hand with it, but it's such an important topic. It needs its own attention. It needs its own community engagement and its own representation. It would get washed out in an OCP.
Okay, I'm seeing some other hands, so I'm going to just have staff chime in here. Ms. Machada, then Mr. Schiefer. Good?
Through your worship, if I can make a suggestion to, we can remove the first part, the first part of that motion, to draft the bylaw, and simply proceed with items two and three, which are to proceed with the stakeholder and public engagement that will result in the drafting of a tree protection bylaw or tree management bylaw. And also, the $5,000, we can certainly try to coordinate the stakeholder engagement with the OCP, but I don't think that's going to result in staff not requiring the $5,000. That's going to be used to produce the survey required for the consultation, as well as the educational materials that would be used at the engagement. So it's, it's not like combining those is going to actually result in any savings, because the ad, we might save a little bit of money, but that doesn't even come out of the $5,000, and there's still staff time, et cetera, that's going to have to be attributed to that engagement, so.
I, I like that, because I think it's important that there be some form of educational materials present, so that it, it provides a guiding way to have a dialogue. It could be the case where we do other luncheon learns, where you're bringing in a specific group to talk about this specifically, like with the developer group, and then to hear from others, and, and to get different feedback, launching the survey. So, I think it would make sense that, I like what Ms. Machada has presented, just as a way to, to move along, but we're not committed to any one thing yet, because I would like to hear more from the public on this. Counselor Betos?
Yeah, I would just like to say Counselor McMath has convinced me to move ahead with the $5,000. She made a compelling argument, and I have to agree with her on that. Some of the other stuff, I don't, but that's okay. Going with staff's recommendation, I'm fine with that. That sounds a good way to proceed. Thank you.
Okay, so we do have an amended motion, so, being that we're in committee of the whole, we don't need to, we can be a bit more flexible with how we've done this by eliminating that one part already?
I would agree with that, your worship.
Okay.
Because this is going to have to come forward and at a regular council meeting to actually be endorsed anyway.
Okay, okay. Counselor St. Pierre?
I'd like to suggest, first of all, that the OCP does offer a good opportunity to piggyback, because it's already got a robust public engagement component. Previous OCPs, as has been noted by members of the public, have actually had tree bylaw and tree protection elements in it. I'm thinking that the most useful thing we can do in terms of public engagement is actually find out, is a Machoza, Callwood, or Sanish version of this sort of thing wanted, but also, as Counselor Betos has pointed out, really push the public education piece in terms of allaying people's fears as to what the bylaw might actually represent. So when we talk about public engagement, at whatever level, whether it be OCP or otherwise, I really would like to make sure that that's actually the focus, not necessarily trying to get into the nitty gritty of how to craft the bylaw. We already know how that's going to go, more or less. We're trying to find out what level it's going to be. That's what we'd like to know from the public, and then make sure that they understand what's going to be involved down the line with whatever choice is made. So, just in terms of input to staff, which I can see them writing frantically swam. Thank you so much.
Yeah, no, this is, this is good. And I just think that when, when we have that conversation with the public, it, it's not just, do you like what Callwood, Sanish, or Machoza are doing? Because you can't expect people to go home and look those up and then start to compare. It'll be more, it'll be more, I think, as Ms. Hooper said, like, this is, an example would be this, that, or that, and we'd have to pull them out distinctly, knowing that some folks will go back and want to read up more in those bylaws, but we can't present it in that way, because it wouldn't, you won't, we won't get the feedback that we're looking for there. That's, that would be too much. So it'd be more anything and everything, and, and all the way down. So I, I think this is good. This will move us along in, in a good direction, and I think that where we reach out to engage with the OCP is appropriate, but I think we also need to have some other takeaway sessions that focus on specific things, specifically. Anyway. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor here. Anything further with this amended motion, and that is that council direct staff to proceed with a public and stakeholder engagement process regarding tree management and protection as outlined in the staff report, incorporate those discussions into the draft tree management bylaw, and that council allocate $5,000 from council contingency to facilitate public and stakeholder engagement. This is a recommendation from committee the whole to council, so there'll be another opportunity to talk about it before the work actually begins. Okay, so I'll call the question then. All those in favor, opposed, and that's carried unanimously. Great, thank you. Number three on this is water service for North Sook. So, I asked staff to bring this forward, because we have received delegations from the North Sook Community Association. We have also received correspondence, and we also now know what the High, Ministry of Highway and Transportation is intending to do in a particular section from Connie to Glenslake Road. We've learned that there's no piped water in that area, and that our residents are on wells, and that many are concerned about the, the overall integrity of the well system going forward, both through and after construction. So, some conversations we've had is about what we should advocate for, for water extension. So, water service is not provided through the Ministry of Transportation or through the province. It's, goes through the Capital Regional District. So, we have representation on the, the Water Commission as a whole, as well as the Wanda Fuka Water Distribution. So, the way that our appointments have worked out, that basically puts Counselor St. Pierre, Counselor Parkinson, Counselor Logans, and Counselor McMath, or is that it? There's sort of the three there. So what I'm thinking is that we will need to coordinate efforts here in terms of doing this, is that what I would look for is that something along the lines that, that council and staff draft a notice of motion to those two entities, the Wanda Fuka Distribution and the CRD Water Commission, for council to consider in an upcoming meeting, so that we have sort of a solid resolution in place. This would follow the lines more of a UBCM, where there's staff assisted me when we, when I was doing advocacy work on health-related, whereas this, whereas that, whereas this, and then therefore, we are asking that. So it's something that I can help with, and then perhaps we bring that, and then a letter from mayor and council signing off, that you can then take back to the respective boards to then start that process and see where it goes. So in the absence, we need to just get rolling on this, so that we can hear what that response would look like. Direct staff to draft a notice of motion to the CRD Water and Wanda Fuka Water Distribution Service?
What?
Commission, no, it's, it's not a commission. One is a commission and one isn't. I just call it the...
Distribution Commission.
Is it a distribution commission?
It's also.
Okay.
Water Distribution Commission.
All right, so it is a commission, okay, advocating for extension of water services to North Sook. And then that we get that movement happening and see where it goes, and then as we get responses back, that we respond in kind accordingly, and, because that was what we committed to the residents, that we would look into doing. So we need to get this started. So this would be the beginning point for that, so that, because we have different people on it, that we are sending the same message in that way. Counselor Betos?
So moved.
Okay.
I'm not against it.
Okay, so we just need a mover, so...
Wait, there's an amendment.
Just a point, just an amendment.
Of course.
It is. Not against it. Wanda Fuka Water Distribution Service.
So it is service, okay. Thank you for that. So council direct staff to draft a notice of motion to the CRD Water Commission and Wanda Fuka Water Distribution Service advocating for extension of water services to North Sook. And then we can start putting some ideas. Counselor St. Pierre?
Are we specifying that this is along the, the roadwork that's happening with the province?
Yeah.
Do we want to specify that here, or?
That can come in, in the, we can formulate that. I mean, this is what sort of, we've always heard that within Sook, I hear people all the time asking, can you look at water extension here or there? What's prompting this is the highway extension going through that area. So if we're ever going to get water there, this would be the time for that to happen.
Absolutely. Yeah, absolutely. I was just wanting you to be in the, in the, in the, sorry, in the motion or not.
Does it need to be there?
Is it useful to have it there?
Through your worship, no, staff will use that as the rationale for the whereas statements that go into the notice, or the motion.
Okay, cool.
Yeah, so then that way we can move this on, and then if you receive queries from residents, particularly those that sit on, on the particular commissions and service boards, you can say, okay, this is now happening, and we are doing our part here, and we'll see where it goes. Anything from anyone? Okay, call the question, then all those in, oh, favor, opposed, it's carried unanimously. Sorry, again, there's public input before we move the motion would have been appropriate. We've passed it, but I would like to welcome anyone, because that would help, just getting any public commentary on this.
I'm pretty lucky.
I'm lucky, it's like the second time in one meeting. There will be opportunity at an upcoming regular council, because this all flows to regular council, that, that will have second time. Sorry about that. Okay, so then at our last meeting, our last regular council meeting, we had received correspondence from the CRD, as well as others in the region regarding the formation of the Regional Food Land Access Program. So that's where we had asked that this item in particular come to a committee of the whole, so that we can have some more discussion about it, and that's where we're at here. So, really what we have in here is the different correspondence that's come, and then there was a new one that, there was another item that came in later today, some additional correspondence as well. So, Counselor Bateman?
Can I, I just have to acknowledge that I'm part of a, a group called the Woodside Action Group, which is looking to find creative ways to activate farmland in the community. Is that a conflict of interest that I need to bow out on at this point, or?
I don't, I don't think so. I don't know.
There's no confusion there.
No, there isn't, no.
Yeah, if you feel that there's a perceived conflict, then I would recommend you step out. Staff can't tell you or recommend whether or not you do have an actual conflict, but I don't know how much crossover it would have with the subject matter.
I don't, okay, I've acknowledged that, and I don't believe that there is a crossover at this point.
Okay. Thank you for querying that, though, Counselor Bateman. Okay, so, you know, off the conversation, so Counselor Betos, then St. Pierre?
No, it's fine. Yeah, actually, I have a few things to say on this. Is, first of all, I'm all for locally produced food, preserving farmland, encouraging small farm production. It's a very big thing in Sook, and I really endorse it. But I'm not convinced that this initiative will do very much to achieve these ends. You know, and I've run a small farm myself, five acres, and I have a little understanding of it. The trust calls for the use of municipal lands to, to lease out to small farmers. First of all, we don't have a whole lot of land to lease out, if any at all. And one of the things that talking, I think it was Counselor St. Pierre, when these small farms are allocated and whatnot, that the people actually have to live on the land to make a go of it, and which opens up a whole new host of problems, because A, it won't be their land, how do you build a house on it, and all that sort of stuff. But anyways, that's only one of the problems I've had. And if you look at number seven, in, on page 80, it says, "The study recommends that the Farmland Trust Program initially target existing lands that are municipally owned as to eliminate the need to acquire private lands." Well, we don't have any to municipal lands that I know of. Somebody can correct me on that. And what they're asking for is basically $10,000 a year, if that formula works out. And I have to look at, you know, what's the net benefit to us? You know, we're going to give $10,000 away, and Counselor Bateman can tell me what that means in the tax rules. I'm not sure what that means. But without public lands, I don't see this being of any, any real use to us. And we can't consider it. Article number 12 on that same thing says about, "A farmland access program would work separately for the parks, from the parks program system, while neither distracts from the other. A farmland trust would effectively mobilize land for food production, while the parks program would focus on conservation and recreation." Well, the land we own, like this big piece next door, it's parkland, and we would never be in a position to let that leased out to farmers. They'd be here at pitchforks with the regular residents. So that, that's also a concern of mine. And number 13, again, public lands are viable for farming and offering these lands at a fair agricultural lease rates. We don't have any public land. Number 17, we have the Sook Farmland Trust in Sook, and when I pulled that up, I saw Counselor Bateman's happy face there. I'm sure he's just for... But anyways, we have a farmlands trust. So, and another question is, they're asked, they got a setting budget of $127,000 to $143,000 for a year. And I'm not sure what you, what do they do? I have nothing in there that said what they're going to be doing with it, and you're certainly not going to buy any land with $127,000 or $140,000. So I'd be interested to see what they have there. So, then I looked at this, Jason Austin sent a very interesting email yesterday, and he has some very good points in here, which I think needs to be expanded on. First of all, he's saying there's a false claim about incomes, you know, there, most farms, 94% raise more than, less than $25,000. You know, for us to encourage anybody, and the most important, despite the data showing the small-scale farmers have not been able to make a living in Capital Region, the CRD has now asked you, as a taxpayer, to establish a small-scale entrant farmers in the same market with no business model to show they have a chance of success, where almost everybody else has failed. So, that to me sends off a lot of red, or pushes up a lot of red flags, and I would need to know a great deal more about this than I would commit our community to paying $10,000 with no chance to get nothing back.
Thank you, Counselor Betos. So in some ways, like a CRD service, it can be joined in at, at any time. We've done that with the arts service. It's been at play for quite some time, and in the last couple of years, we've joined it to see how it works for us out here. So we're in it for a couple of years. And then only those participating municipalities pay the requisition towards it. There's been some conversations with the CRD that through the Regional Parks Acquisition Fund, that lands, that those lands be used into, into establishing for farming. But they've also distinctly have, there's been some pushback on it, that regional parks is for conservation, and that they have a completely different theme to it. And then it was decided at the board that this be referred out to municipalities to have these larger conversations. So that's where we're here, which is good. So thank you very much for that. I think in terms of lands, that's where we have our Sun River allotment gardens would be one that we've leased locally to our Sook Region Fuji, and they're doing a marvelous job there, and that works really well. But otherwise, we are a bit stuck in terms of having lands. Counselor St. Pierre, then Bateman?
Okay. I took a lot of time going through this, and there's a lot here, so please forgive me for that. One of my curiosities was, what would the consequences for Sook be if we didn't sign on? And food security is actually a regional problem, or a regional challenge. Sook is never going to produce, well, not never, that's really harsh. Sook is unlikely in the near future to produce all the food that its growing population actually... actually needs, and so it's going to be dependent on agricultural lands in Sanage, Machos, and other areas. Uh, that's why we, in some ways, have a CRD and services across the region, because, you know, uh, basically contributing in this area would actually allow that to happen. Now, one of the things that does happen, from what I can tell with, um, having a farmland trust, is that any people that actually have farmland, um, in SUK could potentially donate to the farmland trust, and then SUK would actually have farm assets. But without such a structure in place, farmers that want to get out of farming because they're done with it, don't necessarily have that option in terms of maybe setting up some sort of legacy planning in that direction. So something that was administered and managed at a CRD level that could actually accept donations through the district, and the district, I believe, has the ability to issue charitable tax receipts, I'm not sure, that would have to be confirmed, but (laugh) there is that possibility, uh, would give us the opportunity to actually develop a land bank locally, but not without the structure to hold it. And we've not had the structure to hold anything like that in the past. So this might be a step in that direction, but I agree that we need to look further. Uh, in terms of the various things that are being asked, I would suggest that supporting the creation is not too dangerous. Helping finance, $10,000 for food security is, you know, about what most families pay on groceries, I don't think it's too bad for a district. Uh, we don't have any land to offer right now, so that'll be interesting to see what The issue that keeps on coming up again and again is housing. Uh, there's no way that most of these things can actually work without housing for young farmers or people that are beginning on these lands, and right now, I don't see the proposal actually addressing that in the least. Uh, their numbers are preposterous and highly optimistic, at 25,000 per acre or some such. I don't know anybody who, well, that's not true. Microfarming with lots of intensive people, but then you put lots of people on a farm, you have to have housing for all those people, because otherwise you can't produce that kind of money on that kind of acreage. It can be done, but it can only be done intensively with people. So, there's issues around that. In terms of Mr. Austin, uh, I think he was a little bit alarmist, but had some really good points. Uh, I suspect that the website and promotion is, from what I can tell, for the program and not for individual farmers, but it might be better used as a way to promote all farming locally, to actually produce local food production. And that's something that this sort of organization could potentially do. It doesn't take into account, for example, that established farmers purchased land maybe, you know, five years ago. I, I know that in our case, uh, the land that we purchased for our own farm, we couldn't afford now, because it's almost doubled in price, let alone farmland that was purchased 20 years ago. So it doesn't necessarily take into account, uh, the way that young farmers are having to try and get land. Uh, you can lease land for 500 or 1,000 if someone's willing to lease it to you, and that's actually approachable. But right now, actually buying it is ridiculous for anyone who's just starting out, it's just absurd. Uh, this actually does address that. Uh, he talks about permanent infrastructure, including wells, ponds, and drainage, and again, how do you actually put in that infrastructure? Uh, that infrastructure would belong to the land, and therefore would belong to whatever organism actually owned the land. Uh, these are permanent improvements. Uh, you put in a pond, or a well, or any sort of drainage, that's a permanent improvement of the land that actually goes with the land. Uh, and it's a permanent improvement that increases the food production capacity forever. So I don't see why the farmer would necessarily have to pay for that. Some people are lucky enough to buy farmland that already has all those things in place. Um, the only place that would be different would be fencing, which does tend to go down over time. In my experience, competition with farmers is not really much of a thing. Uh, I've found, uh, at least in SUK and most places, farmers cooperate, they're working with each other, there's enough market out there to buy food. Uh, there might be some competition, but that's not really as big a problem as it might seem. We're actually just not producing enough food to feed ourselves, so competition's not that big a deal. The real problem is low food prices. Uh, food is not priced at a reasonable rate, it doesn't actually reflect the amount of work put in, no matter who's doing it. And having more appropriate food pricing would actually help established farmers and young farmers both do better. So I, I think that there's a bit of a miss, I don't know. He's very, very, very smart, got good arguments, but I don't know if I agree with that one. In terms of tractors being provided, I don't think that's what I read, but it's not a bad idea for an incubator farm, which, where you would have shared equipment. So I guess in summation, in terms of, uh, Mr. Austin's, uh, email, I agree with some of his points, but by and large, think that moving forward with this type of initiative would really support food security in the region. Uh, finally, I'd like to point out that it might be appropriate for a regional food land access program to start looking at the regulations and laws that actually make farming non-profitable for small farms. Cash cow used to be a cow, because you could actually make around 20 grand a year selling milk. Now it's illegal to do so. Uh, you can't have more than 100 laying hens, and eggs are easy to sell. You can't grow out meat birds and slaughter them yourself and sell them, instead you have to lose 10 to 15% sending them to an abattoir because of killing them on the road because they're fragile. All of these things make it really hard, I can tell you this from experience, for small farmers to make a living. If we want small farms to make a living, it might be appropriate for this type of organization to actually start working on some legislative barriers to small farms.
Thank you very much for that perspective, Counselor. Counselor Bateman?
Okay, yeah, thank you, Counselor St. Pierre and Counselor Beddoes. It's, it's good to have a diverse range of, of opinions, uh, and insights. Uh, I, I will have to acknowledge, in addition to my current involvement with the Woodside Action Group, I was a founding board member of the SUK Farmland Trust Society. Um, I also, in my role with Transition SUK, organized something called the Food Land Roundtable, which involved groups like the Chamber of Commerce, SUK Region Food Chi, Mrs. Lures was part of that group. Uh, we had some lively discussions, we didn't get too far, we did seek some, um, a grant from Van City for, uh, because the key here is some sort of sustainable position that can actually do the work, as opposed to the volunteers who gathered around that food table. Uh, also, at the same time, we had Mark Ziegler, uh, who, who was here last week, speaking on behalf of the Multi-Belief Initiative. He's a federal, a former federal economist, and, uh, he and Mary Cole from Inishog Farm, uh, did a number of presentations on the possibilities of a SUK food shed. And I E., um, in Transition SUK's, one of its ideas is localized economy, circular economy, grow the food, consume it here. Uh, currently, I think we have maybe 2% uh, local food is consumed in the region, and Mark and Mary came up with this, if we could get it up to 5%, just as small as that, it would make a major impacts on a, on a bunch of levels. So having said all that, um, I, I will note that back on February 25th, in, in these chambers, uh, following Patrick Golly Gale's, uh, delegation presentation, and on the same night, we had the ALC Chair in the room, uh, we, as a council, um, made the motion that councils support the creation of a regional foodlands trust and regional foodlands trust acquisition fund. Um, we made that motion, I'm not sure how far it's gone, because it hasn't shown up in the paperwork we've been receiving from the CRD. To date, North Sanage, Central Sanage, and Sanage have agreed, and that's for good reason. As Counselor Beddoes points out, um, we don't have any public land that could be dedicated to this program. Uh, in each of those municipalities, um, they do have public land. In Central Sanage, there's Mayber Flats, Panama Flats in Sanage, and Sandown in North Sanage. So each of them, each of those municipalities are poised to take immediate advantage of, of a, um, a foodlands trust. So yes, I think there, the funding is, I think, $130,000, that would, uh, supply, um, two positions, a coordinator of the foodlands trust and, and an, uh, assistant. It would work out to, what, on our individual tax bills, I think it comes in at $1.75, if it is Central Sanage, North Sanage, Sanage, and Sydney is the current model. If, if SUK got involved, it would drop to maybe a $1.65. Um, if all of the CRD is involved, the cost drops to 70 cents, and I don't think all of the CRD will be involved, because there's been, I don't think, um, some of the urban centers are particularly interested, and so they, they miss the point that we are in a regional economy here, and that the food security in our farm belts will support and supply food to, to the heart, to the urban heart of town. At 10 acres, you can have a meal locally, 10-mile diet meal. And just as counterpoint to, to Mr. Austin, who, who provided us and has been providing this documentation to all the municipalities, because all 13 municipalities are having this conversation, or have been asked to by the CRD, by CR Capital Region Food and Agricultural Initiatives Roundtable Society, and what the late correspondence we received, I'll just quote here from Linda Gaggy, who has been spearheading this project, "While there are some concerns raised by individual farmers from the region, it is important to understand that farmers who are thinking broadly about the needs and interests of the sector are in support of this approach." And then, in this document, she goes through a number of the points that Mr. Austin raised. So, I don't know, I've, I, I, I think at $1.65 per person, uh, it's, it's not a bad investment in, in a regional food economy. It also sets us up for the day when we move to other solutions and, or other, um, models, because this, this report does have a number of, of examples of foodland access and community partnerships, because the key here is you've got a non-government organization pairing up with this CRD, uh, group, and it's up to the NGO to, to, to hire the, um, hire the coordinator for the particular property and ensure that everything is running smoothly. We have examples like, um, well, one of the, one of the examples this Woodside group talks about is Quantlin Polytechnic University, uh, which runs the Swanson First Nation Farm School, uh, and, um, the possibility of creating a farm school here in the region tied in also with a cooperative farm, where, where, uh, new and young farmers can have nice, small piece of land to learn, learn the arts of growing food, and it's affordable and accessible. And these young farmers, um, and new farmers for that matter, cannot afford, uh, $50,000 to $100,000 an acre to purchase farmland. Woodside Farm, for example, is on the market at 3.75 million at the moment, and that, at 88 acres approximately, works out to, I think, just under 50,000 an acre. Anyway, there's lots to absorb here, and I think ultimately, this perhaps is not the right context for us to be having this conversation. You know, the agricultural plan of 2012, uh, does, one of its top recommendations is an agricultural advisory, uh, committee, and I would think that around that table, you would have a very, um, lively and fulsome discussion that would then come to us with recommendations, um, from that, that particular expertise. Thank you.
Yes, however, we do have to provide feedback by a certain date this time around.
So back, so the point was that back on February 27th, we did vote in favor of supporting this, this kind of venture.
Yes. Counselor McMath.
I feel there's still like a, a big lack of detail here, and what suits those communities with big parcels doesn't suit us in particular, and so I don't really know that this model suits SUK. I have a hard time putting in, I know it's easy to be like, oh, it's only a buck 70. However, how much is SUK going to actually benefit from participating in this? That's not to say SUK can't create its own model that would, that would fit us. And one of the things that Mr. Austin touches on, which I would like to speak with Mr. Jeff Whitman, is they're leased to new farmers only. Like, that's a clause in their statement, and so if you have, like, active, educated farmers who, maybe they need like a little boost to expand, they won't be able to participate. And so there's some of the, that minutia has really big ramifications, and so I would like to move the motion that staff be directed to invite Mr. Jeff Whitman from the CRD to discuss the opportunities for participating in a CRD-operated foodland access program by way of delegation at the blank regular meeting of council. And to add to that, I'd also like to invite Mr. Austin as well to speak.
Okay, so I'm not going to entertain that just yet, because I want to hear from the public before we start moving motions.
Yeah, fair enough.
So we'll just put that...
That's my stance, so.
Okay, we know where Counselor McMath stands, um, so I'll go to Counselor Beddoes, then St. Pierre, but no motions, please, because I do want to invite the public, and then we can see about a motion, okay?
Um, yeah, I just want to comment on Counselor St. Pierre, he always has the wealth information in regards to farming, which I find fascinating. I like to sit down and have a few beer with him sometime, and talk about some possibilities when I win the lottery and buy that farm out there, or what we can do with it. Uh, but I think we have to deal with the proposal that was put before us, and the proposal put before us, it's not about, uh, acquiring land, it's about using our municipal land. So going to Mr., Counselor Bateman, originally, we talked about the acquisition trust, much like they used to about a parks trust they used to have and buy all this parkland, got in a ton of trouble. But, uh, that's not what they're talking about here. And, uh, again, I go with, uh, Counselor McMath, I do not see a net benefit to this community other than yay, we're pulling our share for the, for the big, uh, stage. But what is it? We're hiring two staff people. And I, to me, we're, we're creating another little empire, which chances, this is my opinion only, chances of success are very nil to none. Um, so I, I can't support this, sending any money at all to this situation, until, as Counselor McMath says, we get a whole bunch more information. So I'd be happy to have somebody come and speak to us on it, from both sides of the fence, I'm not negative on anything, nor am I really positive on this. I just don't think there's enough information here that I'd be willing to commit $10,000 from our SUK coffers, whatever it comes out in the tax rules or not. $10,000 is $10,000, and we've got to be careful with where we spend our money.
Counselor St. Pierre?
Uh, one of the things that we do get out of this is access to a legal structure for, for land trusts, and, uh, having actually tried to set up a land trust in the past and gone through the hassle of talking to lawyers and just dealing with all the implications, it was very, very costly. Maintaining staff to actually manage a land trust is also very costly. Uh, if we were actually to try and, you know, come up with our own version, you know, locally in SUK, it would actually be way more expensive, because we just have to pay more. My hope is that if we actually do decide, and I'm, I'm expecting, actually, that we'll simply go forward with the second part of the motion and just wait on anything else, but if we do decide to go ahead, and I hope we will, uh, that we'll be sharing the cost for the, the organizational infrastructure, so that we're not carrying the whole weight. But then, if we have residents in SUK or people in SUK or the opportunities to acquire, you know, food-growing assets, we've got a structure to manage them, and we don't have to deal with that. And we're just good to go, we're turnkey on it. So that's my hope.
Okay, Counselor McMath, and then I'd like to go to the public, please.
I'd rather spend more money to keep it in-house if it benefits the community more, rather than spend a little money and not see a big benefit for the community.
Go ahead, make it short.
I'm concerned about how long that might take, and we don't have that long.
Okay, so I'd like to invite any members of the public forward to speak on this, please. Please come up and just turn on the microphone, and all we need is your name. Just on the base of the mic.
My name's Mary Alice Johnson. I'd like to, uh, tell you about Halliburton. It's in Sanage. It was a piece of land that was, it's an example of why we may not have land, but this was land that Sanage didn't have, but they got it, and they were able to lease it to the Halliburton Society. And out of that, the way they got it, it was land that was held there for water, and it just by, they didn't need it, so it was Victoria that had it. And, but a neighborhood, and a group of farmers got together and said, this would be a great land for, um, to have as an incubator farm for new farmers. And that was probably 15 years ago, and it's on Halliburton. And out of that have come amazing young farmers. One of them's right beside me at Mall Street Market, and he's bringing in loads of produce. He does- He doesn't live on the property, none of them can live on the property, but they share marketing, they share knowledge, they share fencing, they share irrigation, they share a cold, a cooler, and they have a market together, they come to market together, they have no, they have all kinds of crossing of information. So this is an example of, no, we don't have a piece of land that we, that Suk owns that we could, that we could use right now to turn into a Halliburton, but they got it just by surprise. It's, and then we have this real movement of people who, who really want to get onto the land, and there's no way they're going to be able to afford to do it. This gives us an opportunity to see models, different kinds of models. It'll be, it'll be region-wide, as Tony, as Tony said. It will give us access to support from these two staff people, and it'll also start giving us legal, legal models. When we tried, when we formed the Suk Farmland Trust about four years ago, because there was a group of people that made an offer on 150 acres off of Helgason, but there was no structure at all. They were just doing it because there's enough of us in the area who want to have that kind of, we want to have a, they were calling it Suk, there was a name for it, but, Community Farm. And we wanted it, but we didn't have, we were so disorganized, we didn't even have a, a framework to put it into. So quickly, a group of us formed the society, and we still have the society going with a bit of funds there just in case some opportunity like that comes up again. And this, I see this, this is an opportunity for us to join in with the whole, whole CRD region to look at how this can be done and, and learn from it. I've been farming on my farm for about 30 years, and having a teaching background, I have welcomed young people to come onto my farm and farm with me. And I find many, many young people who are really, really interested in this, probably well over 100 have come through my farm. We immediately began to see after they finished what we called an apprenticeship on my farm that they needed land to farm on. And we formed a little organization called Linking Land and Future Farmers to try to hook them up with people who would let them use land. But right away, we found out you can't get a long-term lease. Our, our different government structures don't like to have long-term leases put on private land. So you can't possibly really develop a farm if you can't get more than a two-year lease. But if we could get this kind of land, then we could have long-term lease where people can at least invest in fencing. And, and, and I find, I've been farming now on my farm, it's my full-time job. I bought my 10 acres for about $50,000, $60,000 when I got it, and I didn't intend to farm it, but immediately I found, I, I thought I was going to have a, you know, a field of tomatoes that no one wanted to buy. Immediately, I found people in our community want to buy local produce. I'm way overbooked for my box program, I could, I've never advertised in my farm. I have no worry about competition from any young farmers. I welcome them. There's a huge demand out there for produce. And we, we have intelligent young people who want to get on the land, and they are having, they, we need to give them any opportunity, any models, any support we can in doing that. I actually have two of them who've come here tonight for my farm after a long, hard day of harvesting. I might mention May is a hard time to be talking about farming at night because it's hard work, but they're here tonight, perhaps they'll talk with you about their thoughts too. At my farm now, there are four or five young people, some are volunteers, some are apprentices, and they're, they would all really like to have an opportunity to have a piece of land to farm on. Sun River Gardens, we didn't know we were going to have Sun River Gardens, did we? We got it, and it's a wonderful opportunity. Something like that might come up, and we wouldn't have a model to, to, to know how to do that if it was a farm. We wouldn't know if we had farmland and we could, we could lease it. So this gives us a chance to, to be part of an experiment in seeing how we can do this. I think that's enough, thank you.
Ms. Johnson, I just have a question back to you, if you don't mind. So in terms of housing, that's not a barrier then for, for the young people that have come to your farm to apprentice? It's more they're looking for a place to farm, but they're obviously housed somewhere.
We have people who come, who, who have their own housing, and they come and volunteer on the farm and work there. We have housing for our people on the farm. I'm not in the ALR.
Okay.
But at Halliburton, there is no housing.
Right, okay.
Right. And I think I would worry about using ALR, ALR land for housing because the whole point of the ALR is to preserve it to farm.
Right.
And I think if you have housing on it, it takes over from, somehow food gets lost. Good food gets lost, and so that we don't have good food where, because we find that our housing becomes a bigger need. So it's really important that we keep our farmland for growing food. Yes.
Thank you for coming tonight. I know it's a busy time for you. Other speakers?
Ellen Lures, 5526 Suk Road. I've been farming in Suk for over 30 years as well, same, about the same time as Mary Alice. I have concerns with a farmland trust. And as John Rand says in, in this CRD unfair competition, there's a whole lot of things around here. I don't know where to start, there's so many things. ALR land, in ALR lands, you can, on ALR lands, you can sell 40% of other people's products. These are regulations that we've never dealt with. On our property, it's true what Mary Alice said, you can't keep up with produce. Many people who are off on, on different areas would like to sell produce from our place, but I can't do that because I'm not in ALR land. Those are regulations to have to change. Lots, the deregulate, as, as, we were talking about deregulating, we've got so many regulations. Volunteers, volunteer farmers, Mary Alice was talking about a volunteer farmer's coming in. Well, if I had somebody coming in to volunteer in my farm, I have to get $1,000 insurance, even for volunteer, any workers. So there's no, I do it myself. So it's what I can do, and that's it. Water costs. Now, Sun River, lovely, really lovely. Grants, things that I can't apply for, water costs there are $350 because they don't have a, for the year, because they don't have a building on it. My water costs are $1,200 a year. And Counselor Beddoes was correct, if you make $25,000, that's really amazing. It's a good thing that I'm, and my husband and I both have old age pins and keep on We've talked about this in OCP, we've talked about it many times, we've talked about it with Agricultural Plan. The problem, problems that are, what you're talking about with, with, for farming, farmers cannot, we can't, with all the regulations there, the taxes, the tax increase if you bought land, the income isn't adequate. We used to be able to, like you say, slaughter our own animals, and it was a buyer beware, but not anymore. Even spent chickens, people can't even get rid of them. That's why those chickens were running around in Sanage there, because it costs $5 just to get the chicken processed. So, and then what is it going to do with the chicken that's scrawny and been, and it's laid its life? It has about three pounds of meat on it, and, and it's only good for soup. So there, you have, you need to know the whole picture. There isn't any money in it, and it's not fair, it's not fair to have that unfair competition of a farmlands trust. And a paid position for, two paid positions to, to look after the farm, I, I only wish. We had a raspberry farm, we, I couldn't keep up with it. It was, it was great, $3,500 for the income, the water bill was $1,200. And then, then Mosel Hod came along and said we had to pay all our farmers minimum wage. I'm like, well, I'm never going to make minimum wage. So I just cut them down with a brush cutter. I mean, and fed them to the goats. So, you know, then we want to pay for other people to have water, fencing, set up the trees, fruit trees. The farmers are already doing that, and to, it taxes even more to look after somebody else's farm. It just doesn't work that way. What we need to do is look at, instead of building these houses, multiple houses with scrawny little lots that you can't even grow a potato, as my grandmother would say, we need to have, let people be able to grow food in their own yards. In our OCP, we made sure that you could have chickens, you could have goats, so you can have food. But I don't think you can, can apply for, to, to have farmers come, come together and, in a group like that. They can never make the money. How many people I've talked to when we, when, with our Fuji meetings and things, say, I'm never going to make any money? Well, we can't. They cannot. And even my own father, I remember when, the only time he had a regular check is when he turned 65. You know, it's, it's a reality. And I think you, I think we have to look at the realities and, and talk about how we can do things to make it better for farmers as it is, so farmers can farm. But to set up a farmland trust and to have farmers farm, it's just not going to work. I was part of the, the teaching, teaching young people to come, and they wanted to farm and all that sort of thing, and they thought they, stars in their eyes, they thought, oh, I'll get this beautiful piece of property, and I'll farm, and I'll make all this money. And I said, keep your daytime job because you're not going to make that money. It's a fact. So I think we have to be realistic, and I'm just giving you the realistic. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Lures. Do we have other members of the public?
Hi, so my name is Jessica Paredo. I came here last year, and I was apprentice at, at Mary's farm, and just wanted to share a little bit about my situation. And I had just, you know, this is a whole new world for me. I come, I, I did up business commerce, and I come from the city, like, it, it's been a really big change for me. And, you know, I came, I was living in Mexico City, I'm from the island, but I was down there for seven years, and I just really fell in love with, with the whole farming life. And, and I think it's a profession that you really, your heart really has to be in it, you know? And we just moved here from Mexico with my partner, and we want to come here to farm. And as we start looking at business models, it's just really, really difficult to see how you can, you can, you can make that happen. And so I'm here with Mary, just, you know, getting the skills and, and getting, understanding the, the whole farming world. But as you start looking into numbers, it's just, how, you know, how are we going to live off this? So I think it's important to see as young people that, you know, want to farm, how, how, how is it feasible? And, you know, people that have been in this, and it's not that we want to be millionaires or anything, you know, or, or nothing like that. But as you said, there is a problem with food security, and maybe there, these models aren't viable, but then what is, you know? And, and what is Suk? How is Suk going to look at this and, and find a resolution, you know? And be, how, being positive and seeing how, how we could do it. But anyways, I just wanted to share that with you.
Thank you very much for sharing your perspective with us. Ms. Dunbar, can you just introduce yourself?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Phoebe Dunbar.
Perfect.
I was formerly very involved with Fuji for about nine years, and I think it's really important that we remember, one reason that we're here tonight discussing this, is because it's so important for a community or a region to be able to produce food. And we know from what Ellen Lures told us and others, it's the hardships for farmers on their own lands is very difficult. But I think we need to remember where opportunities have presented themselves in other communities in our province, especially here in Vancouver Island. There are young agrarians who want to grow food, and when they can lease land or opportunities present themselves, we need to seize some of those opportunities and make sure that they happen. And Counselor Beddoes, you mentioned, there is no land that our municipality happens to have title to, but perhaps some opportunities can present themselves whereby we could get some land and some of these models that have been well-proven on the mainland and the Vancouver Island and many, many areas in, in our country. I would like to think that the council can remember some of the larger goals, which is food security, and making some of the new models, or actually, these models aren't that new, they've been quite well-proven. But I think if an opportunity, even if Wilfred's farm should present itself, that's not expensive. You can buy a dump in Shaughnessy or Carisdale for $3.5 million. And if you were able to get a group together, which I think, Jeff, there is a group, right? There's ways, there's ways to partner that. In Richmond, they've got community farms that have partnered with Quantin College or University. And the, the opportunities that have been presented for young agrarians to learn how to farm, it's what the end product is, more food is being produced. And Mary, you stated it well, a lot of food, people are growing it for the passion of it, and they're not doing it for money. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you very much, Ms. Dunbar.
Seize opportunities. Make sure it happens.
Do we have other members of the public that would like to speak? Counselor St. Pierre?
Well, I really appreciate the input from everybody here. That was pretty awesome. I'd like to point out that I know as a farmer that we don't make a lot of money. I got a raise when I started working for council. I mean, that was, I, I got a better paying job.
It's funny.
And that was before, and that was before the raise, okay? So, you know, 50 cents an hour is what I figured I was making at one point, so not a lot. Most of us do it for the lifestyle because we want good food, because we want, we believe in what we're doing. So I, I understand that. The recommendations from a lot of the different groups are that a land trust is one of the viable options for actually making land accessible to young farmers. That's all there is to it. Whether or not we adopt exactly what this model is proposing, because I think there are some issues with it, is a different question. But I don't think that those tweaks are actually in what's right there. What's right there is actually a potential CRD operation of a foodland trust and participate in funding a CRD operation of foodland trust. So that's all that's said right there. In terms of the particulars, that, I think, still needs to be determined. And I think that there's some good input in terms of trying to make sure it doesn't screw up in a number of different ways. At this point in time, our agricultural system, at least in Suk and in general, is broken. We have a system that's not going to be doing too well once we don't have the energy and the oil. We actually need our agricultural, agricultural land that's, that can produce food in Suk to produce food. We need some solutions, and we need them within 10 years. So this is not necessarily a time for a huge number of reports or all the rest. We actually have to hit the ground running, try stuff out, fix it if it doesn't work, and keep on going. And we need to get young farmers on farmland, and we need to scrape up the farmland, we need to make it happen. So I'm totally okay with going for the second recommendation and not supporting immediately, but I want to make it clear, I support those recommendations. And I think that we should be supporting those recommendations. But I would like this council to understand and be... But I would like this council to understand and be unanimous, because I think that with some more information, we can all agree on this.
Okay, so Counselor McMath had, we had made a motion that I sort of tabled off because of the public input, so I'm going to go to that first. And that is that staff be directed to invite Mr. Jeff Waitman from the CRD to discuss the opportunities for participating in the CRD operated Food Lands Access Program by way of delegation at a upcoming regular council meeting. We can also advise the CRD that we are still discussing this. So if we're not able to meet their May 31st deadline, I think that's okay because it's not that, it's not because we haven't dealt with it, it's because we are dealing with it, which I think is acceptable. And we'll just leave it at that. I'm not, I know that Counselor McMath had also indicated perhaps inviting Mr. Austin. I just don't want someone from Central Sanage coming here and telling us, like, he, he wrote in his opinion, yes, he farms, but we also have, we also have our local farmers that farm. And I think that would be a more appropriate, we've heard, read his piece, like he sent to everyone else, and I would just rather not have a delegation from someone that doesn't even, doesn't pay, like, he's just not here. He just gave his opinion and that's fine. I'd sooner have, invite other locals to, to speak. So, so are you okay with that just being the motion that's on the floor? Okay. And there was, there's something added here, and that council directs staff to advise that council, okay, right. And that council directs staff to advise the CRD that council discussion regarding the potential food land access program is still ongoing, just so they know. And then that's where we're at. So this is the motion that's on the floor. Would you like to speak to it first as the mover, Counselor McMath? And then I'll go to Counselor Beddoes.
I should be crystal clear, I'm not anti the idea of it. It's just I'm not sold that this model is the best model for Sook. I think there's other points that have been touched on, which, it's not even just farmland, but just even getting into housing for young people, it's incredibly difficult. So, Sook could create something of its own where, like, there's large chunks of money being asked for. And I think that it should stay here so that we could create our own model to help get young people on plots of farmland. Like, we can create our own model that suits this group. And I worry to just give 10 grand to something where I don't see a clear, direct benefit immediately, it's kind of like, well, maybe we'll get something. Maybe something, I'd rather we put more money into some, a model that suits this community. Because I do, I want these young people to be able to get into the farmland. And I want there to be less restrictions so that people can make a larger profit, so they can spend time teaching people. And I'm encouraging that, I'm absolutely for that, especially in a community that's isolated by one road more than ever. So that I just want you to be clear on where I'm, where I'm going with it.
And that's totally fine, Counselor McMath. Counselor Beddoes?
Yeah, I'd like to make a few comments again. I, you know, I've heard, Mrs. Johnson, first of all, I mean, we're talking sort of apples and oranges here. I certainly understand. And I'm all for producing our own food and assisting farmers. And Mrs. Lures alluded to a little bit of unfairness there, but that goes all with it. But we're not talking about acquisition of land. I mean, we're dealing with a proposal that they sent us here and it's very clear that they're not talking about acquiring land. I'd love nothing better than to, than to purchase that farm out there. If I win the lottery, I'm probably going to do that. And I'd love to parcel it out to young people. But we're dealing with this proposal that was sent to us and what they've sent us is not acceptable. Now, if we, if they can come and explain a little bit better of what benefit there is to us, and I hear Counselor St. Pierre say a lot of wonderful things, but again, it's not addressing to what is presented to us today. And that's what I'm concerned about. What we're addressing here does not fit the bill of what you're asking for, or not fit the bill what you're asking for, or anybody's asking for. And I think it needs a complete rework before I'd be considering sending 10 cents towards the CRD. It, it doesn't accomplish anything. So, I certainly hear what our speakers have said and I disagree, I disagree, I agree with you wholeheartedly that we need to support our local farmers and I need to support some apprenticeship program. But this isn't going to do it, in my opinion. This is not the right proposal to do what we're, we're looking to do.
I'm curious as to why we've eliminated that initial half of this motion. Now, the CRD chairman Plant asked us whether we were, I'd like to see it again. Is it still available?
Yeah, there were two, there was sort of two pieces, there wasn't either or.
So, really, unless we rescind our motion of February 25th, we in fact do support a potential, potential, key word, CRD operation of a food lands trust. We are not willing at this time to participate in funding CRD operation and we are unable to add municipal lands to a CRD operated food lands trust. And that staff, and then we move into the next piece, as we continue our research with the invitation of Mr. Waitman from the CRD. So that would both honor the, the motion we made back on February 25th. It does not commit us to a penny and it does state that we have no lands at this point to, to contribute to this. So they can then say in their onward motion with, with something that a third of the CRD seems to think is a great idea, a fifth, what is that, three of 13?
So you want to say supportive, but we're not going to give them money?
We support a potential CRD operation of a food lands trust. We are not willing to participate at this time in funding and we are unable to add municipal lands.
Okay, because we do, that raises, that raises a good point, Counselor Bateman, just in terms of the resolution that we have live right now and, and what that actually says, because that does, we did, I'll go to staff, because we're just sort of waiting for clarity there.
I just was looking up that motion from February 25th and the discussion surrounding it. And there was nothing directed to be done with that. It just appears to be a, a general statement from council to support that program. So, and it, there was actually a comment made that the District of Sook does not have a representative on the CRD Planning and Protective Services Committee, but we'll hear more should the issue reach the Board of Directors. So I think that's what council is waiting for and now this letter has come from the, the board chair. But that's probably why nothing has been, come of the motion that council made in February. It just seems to be a general statement of support.
Okay, because we received the delegation, but we didn't actually, and that would have been right around when, when that particular committee was sending the recommendation to the board. And then at the board, there was discussion about what to do and then the referral to municipalities went out. So that's what brings us to where we're at. Okay, so in that case, I fully support having Mr. Waitman out here to, as a delegation. I think we can get more clarity on the impact and it'll move us forward. Like, in some ways of doing something local, like, I agree with that as well. It's just sometimes, what is our local capacity? And we have done grants here and there and then, and that's been because community volunteers have come together. And now, instead of doing the work they're doing, they're working on their grant application, they're waiting to see what that success is before they roll forward. And then that's where we're sometimes hearing now how some members of the community, like, can they borrow such and such staff to help them with this or with grants or with that? Because everyone is busy doing all the things that they're doing. So that's where in this case, there is, it's a whole thing about having the, the one and a half staff positions because, to coordinate it all, because otherwise it just doesn't happen. And our community is no different than that. And we're hearing and seeing how that is impacting, just with the busyness that, and the work. It's, it goes to the helpful hands of a few that are doing everything. And it's a lot to expect them to do. And throwing $10,000, just someone locally might do a little bit for, we've done, we've supported farm coordinator program and, and some things in the past and they have been great while they were there. But then it's, this is an ongoing sustained effort. And I think that's where we're at from a food, food security perspective. And clearly you've made note and have raised some of the things that have come out. And where are they now? We haven't had an agricultural committee. We haven't moved on any of the plans. They're all there, but nothing's happened because priorities of council change. And then when it comes to, well, if we have another committee, we got to bring in more staff, we don't want to do that. So then, these all fall by the, things just fall by the wayside. And then we're reminded again, okay, this is important and we need to do something. And then some of the regulatory cutbacks, well, that takes a determined advocacy effort to make that happen. And that's what you need, a sustained advocacy effort to get there. And that's, that you need to have structure and weight behind it to actually make it happen. And that's where, you know, at this point, I'm, I have no problem with the delegation, but I'm also leaning on supporting this initiative because there's just, there's a lot more, there's a body behind it, an established body. It's similar with us supporting the arts program. We have local community organizations that are able to access another different level of funding that we would not have been able to even provide at our community level with what we have. So, you know, but I do also, you know, good to have more time and involvement. It'll take some time to get this off the ground, we'll get more discussion on it and it gives us some time to think about it, but I don't know how readily available Mr. Waitman is. Counselor St. Pierre?
I would like to, I believe the balance on council could probably pass the, the I'm interested in knowing whether or not we want to definitely hear from Mr. Waitman or do we want to move forward? I would like to see more unanimity on council and I think we can achieve that, but I don't know if that's politically expedient in terms of what we're trying to achieve. There's no way that Sook, as it stands, if we don't move quickly, is going to be able to sustain itself, you know, in a decade or so in terms of food. That's all there is to it. We don't have the resources in-house to actually pay for what would be necessary to even start an initiative like this. So, cost sharing on something along these lines to provide us with the structure is, just makes sense, fiscally speaking. $10,000, though a lot in some ways, is actually a relatively small sum compared to the salary of even one staff. But I feel like we're going around in circles nonetheless. I think we're pretty clear in terms of each other's positions and I'm not sure if we should just move ahead with the full resolution or not.
Well, we have one on the floor, so I'm going to call the question on that. And so that is the first one, as it's already been read out. So I'll call the question then. All those in favor, opposed? And that was carried unanimously. And then would you like to make another motion?
Well, I think Counselor Bateman- Counselor Bateman actually suggested supporting the first part, the support of potential CRD operation of a food land trust. My sense is that there's some reticence to fund a program when we don't have any lands that will be managed by said program. Might be interesting to find out whether or not we could start funding when we start having lands.
That's a good point. So, is that your motion then, that, that council directs staff to submit the feedback form to the CRD regarding a regional food land ask us programs indicating the following to support a potential CRD operation of a food lands trust?
And then perhaps with information from the delegation from the CRD, decide what we want to do with the other two parts.
Okay, so that's your motion is the first part then, okay? Discussion on that. Counselor McMath?
I don't understand the point of submitting feedback to fill out, to answer one of the three questions. And it's to say, like, we support this operation, but we're not going to give you any money and we're not going to give you any land, but in theory we support it. Like, that's not, that's not an action item. It's reverse order. Like, I'd rather have the delegation and then from that information, we make a decision on our stance with this program and what that means and what those action items mean. Like, imagine you're the CRD and you get that response back and it's one out of three questions are answered. It's like, yeah, we totally support you, we're not going to give you anything, we're not going to do anything for you. It doesn't make sense. So I'd rather have the delegation and then submit the feedback. I don't think they're going to say, if you don't get it in by this time, then you're out. That's not, that's not the deadline, that's not the game that they're playing. And I totally hear you. It's, there's a push to get this going and I'm all for that, but I don't, I don't want to, that's not an action and I don't want to just jump and make a decision without all the facts.
Counselor Beddoes?
I concur with Counselor McMath. I need more information. What I have here in front of me, what they presented, a lot of it just doesn't make any sense. I'd much rather have them go into acquire land than, than this, what they've given us here. So I'd be interested to have somebody here that can answer my questions direct rather than trying to figure out from this document exactly what they're up to. Because it sounds to me like they've got some feedback and pulled back some things that actually could make a difference. Again, what they presented us here and what we're agreeing to in principle, even if we're not giving them any money, I, I don't see it viable to do the things that I've heard from our residents very passionately is going to do. So I want more information before I'm willing to commit one cent.
Okay, so Counselor Bateman?
I just want, I wanted to say, I've, I've heard this expression lately quite a bit. It's called virtue signaling. And the virtue signal in this case, it's like declaring a climate emergency. It's, it's like an indication that we get it at some level. So what this particular component of this motion states is that Sook, along with North Sanage, Sanage and Central Sanage, in the CRD, we are the food belts of the CRD traditionally. Maywell Wickham's book states very clearly what was happening in this region back in the 30s. And it was a markable amount of potatoes and milk and berries and meat and the whole package was going. We know that we, we have, we're faced with likely increasingly severe problems with imported foods. So basically this is saying, support of a potential, conditional support of a potential CRD operation of a food lands trust is a signal to the CRD that Sook gets it to a degree. And the second part of our motion says, well, we don't get it enough to, to wholeheartedly back this thing and therefore, but either way, I'm, I'm, I'll be voting either way.
Okay, so let me just clarify a couple of things. So the feedback form is not structured in such a way that one builds on, on the rest. When you see the form, there's a municipality, we would write in District of Sook, the date, and there's basically three boxes that you would tick or not tick. Support the CRD, support CRD operation of a food lands trust, check. If you check that, it doesn't mean you have to check willing to fund operation of a food lands trust or able to add lands, because not everyone has. So at some point, you could just check one box and, and go from there and then we can look at the others. So this, this can pass because that is how the form is in itself laid out. One is not based on the other. Other things are like the, the Housing Trust Fund Commission. So there are municipalities who, Sook participates in this and we contribute funds annually. There are other municipalities that have doubled or tripled the amount of funding that they give because they don't want and cannot build any affordable housing in their jurisdictions. So they believe in affordable housing, just not in their community. So they're more than happy to add additional funding because they're not near, they're not near services. It just doesn't make sense for them. So, North Sanage being one. So then they put more funding into the program so it can be built where it needs to be, around core, around employment, around transit, around all those things. So that makes sense. And then others don't participate at all and they're completely doing their own thing, which is fine. So we could pass this motion and then as we get clarity, decide what we want to do with this. This does lend support to the, the initiatives that are happening. And sometimes, like, even with the arts program that we belong to, there's different levels of funding because there are some with a much larger tax base that have the Royal Theatre for, like Victoria, they have these amenities within their communities. So, larger tax base, ability to, to participate at a much higher funding level, more direct funding impact, this is just getting off the ground. So it enables us to have a voice at the table, if anything, right? And that's what, and to get feedback and, and to hear more. So I'm comfortable supporting this first motion as it is. We'll have the delegation when that can come and then make a further determination on funding at a later time. Counselor McMath? Councillor McMath?
So councillor Bateman touched on, this would be sort of us doing a call to action that, oh, it's a climate crisis, but that statement is a very general statement, and it's a call to arms in a general sense. That's not what this is. We didn't declare a CRD climate emergency plan, it's just there's a climate emergency, there is local food emergency. If we approve this first motion, then we have this delegation, and then after we get into the minutia of it, we decide that we actually don't support this program, 'cause this model doesn't fit Sook, then what is the point of doing this now? Why wouldn't we have the delegation get into the nitty-gritty of it, decide, and then give the CRD answers on all three points? I don't understand what the rush is to submit a half response, a third response to the CRD.
Okay, and that's very well, very valid point. So this could just be that we postpone this, just, can we do a postponement to, I was confused postponing and tabling after ten years, to following the delegation?
Yes, postpone would be the correct term. Table is something that will be considered at the same meeting.
Got it.
Postpone is for a future action to have occurred.
Okay, so councillor McMath, would you like to make a postponement motion? So this is on the floor, and we would deliberate on it, once we receive that delegation, we can finish off the final points.
Yes, please.
Okay, so there's a motion to postpone. Councillor St Pierre?
Okay, one of my concerns over postponement, and I will support it if that's the will of council, is that we are dealing actually with a climate emergency, and emergency, you know, by definition means, you know, try and move reasonably quickly. Right now, I feel one of the things that's really tremendously lacking in a general sort of way is leadership at a political level, at all levels of government. I think this is an opportunity to actually provide leadership, to show that we actually get it, that, as councillor Bateman was pointing out, it's a signal. This particular signal doesn't actually cost us anything, it's a potential CRD operation. We're waiting for more information anyway to support anything financially, which I think, as our mayor's pointed out, officially gets us skin in the game until we put money down. We don't really have skin in the game. I don't know if we have any decision-making power or anything like that. But it does actually send out a signal, among other things, to the community that we get it and that we care. And I think that there's some advantage and some benefit to that.
Go ahead, councillor McMath.
I don't think two weeks is gonna make or break this emergency. That's all I'm saying. And it's totally redundant if we approve this, and then after that delegation, we are like, we don't, this model doesn't fit for us. It doesn't make sense. Like, there's no, to push this motion, there's nothing that comes out of that. We are all in consensus that there is an emergency, that there is pressure, but this specific motion changes nothing about that.
We're moving in the right, right, we're moving forward, we're going to, we have a motion, even though it's postponed, it's at least out on the floor, and, and, yeah, and we're gonna get the delegation, we'll have more time and deliberate, and we're good. Final point, I'm calling question after that and postponing.
Cool. As I said, I will support the postponement. I don't have objections, I just want people to be aware of the perception that our community has of our decisions. Often, our decisions seem to take forever, that's certainly the perception. When we can move forward more quickly and have the perception of that, I think that's a good thing. And I'm, I'm okay with the postponement, but I'm pointing out that there is an issue of optics, and I want us to be always aware of that.
Yeah, and I, and I agree with you, councillor St Pierre. However, when we are entertaining joining a whole new service for numbers of years, I think just moving forward in a good, you know, solid way is good. So I'm calling questions that I wouldn't, I'm talking. All in favor of postponement? Opposed, carried unanimously. So that's a good step forward there. Okay, so no new business, motion to adjourn, please. With my councillor McMath, all those in favor? Opposed, carried unanimously. Thank you, everyone, for staying with us tonight.